Check, check. One, two.
That's too loud.
Okay, good evening, Planning Commissioners. We're a couple minutes away from our start time. I just want to do a quick audio test with our panelists. If I could get confirmation from our panelists that you can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. So just stand by while we continue our setup and we'll let you know when you can call the meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
Vice Chair Ebner, are we ready to begin?
Welcome to the regular meeting this Tuesday evening, May 24th, of the Planning Commission. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two will be the swearing in of our new Commissioner, Martin Wiggins.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ebner. Can I have Martin please join me down at the podium? Can you hear me? Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name, please.
Martin Wiggins.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies
Against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
and I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully.
discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties on which I am about to enter.
Okay, thank you very much. You are sworn in.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Ebner?
Here.
Commissioner Nugent?
Present.
Commissioner Patel?
Present.
and Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to all here in the chambers and those online. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. One is to complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Second is to sign and use the iPad at the back of the council chamber. And the third way is to scan the QR code to sign up. The code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. For those of you participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comments will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. The next agendized item is the consent calendar. Can you please read the item, Ashley?
Yes. Item number one, 1651 Coyote Point Drive, findings of general plan conformance resolution adoption.
If there are any members of the council who would like to pull this sign for consent, pull this consent calendar, please do so now. If there are any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item now, would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Vice Chair Ebner, there's one public commenter on Zoom.
Great.
We see that this attendee has lowered their hand. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand again. It appears that we have no speakers at this time with their hands raised.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I will put forward a motion to adopt the resolution for 1651 Coyote Point Drive, findings of general plan conformance.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Chair Williams again is absent, but Vice Chair Ebner?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
So we will close that agenda item with a four oh vote and one absentee for she is absent, Chair Margaret. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. If there are any members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda, you may address it now with the commission. State law prevents the commission from taking any action on a non-agendized item. Your comments may be referred to to staff for follow-up. The target limit for public comments is 15 minutes. However, additional public comment may be provided and/or time for speaker may be reduced to allow all members an opportunity to speak. Do we have any people who are, want to comment on items that are not on the agenda?
Vice Chair Ebner, there's one public commenter via Zoom.
Great.
Ed Evans, you can unmute.
Good evening, Vice Chair Ebner. My name is Ed Evans and I'm a San Mateo resident and I am the Senior Field Representative at Carpenter's Union Local 217 in Foster City, covering the jurisdiction of San Mateo County. As more and more gold-struck, optimistic, opportunistic developers flock to our city to enrich themselves and cut and run with the profits, leaving local carpenters and other tradespeople in the dust, I want to take this opportunity to say on behalf of the carpenters, enough is enough. As more of your agendas fill up with these proposals, I hope that part of the discussion, both in public and in private, will be about local labor standards, good-paying jobs, and opportunity. As a union carpenter, I was given the opportunity to enter into an apprenticeship and I was provided with valuable on-the-job training, healthcare benefits, and a retirement plan. Residents of San Mateo and the surrounding area should have the same opportunity to start a career with the carpenters as well. We are citizens of this community and these are not merely jobs to us, but careers, our very livelihoods. There is no better time to start talking about these opportunities than right now. Labor standards, healthcare benefits for construction workers, local good-paying jobs, and joint labor management apprenticeship programs should be discussed at every one of these meetings, both the Planning Commission and city council levels. The carpenters and their signatory contractor partners are tired of providing opportunities that build sustainable economies and communities, while the private residential development community, and sometimes even its commercial counterpart, continually chooses to ignore us. We are organizing every day. We are pushing legislation at the state level every day with our allies in the Assembly and Senate. We are working in cities throughout the county to pass ordinances and to get our standards into housing elements and general plans, and we will never stop doggedly running down the greedy, cheating, race-to-the-bottom, so-called merit shop values and practices of the insidious non-union competition. We are also aggressively investigating and compiling cases of worker misclassification, wage theft, comp fraud, and tax fraud on public and private job sites. On a more positive, reasonable, and hopeful note, I do want to thank some developers who have made at least an effort to build with union subcontractors here in San Mateo County, in San Mateo. It's no excuse for not using a union general contractor, but we do appreciate it. I would also like to personally invite anyone from the city or the development community to take a tour of our regional apprenticeship training facility. Come see the real built-in equity and sustainability you are getting when you use union apprentices, to say nothing of union journeyman. Again, my name is Ed Evans with the carpenters. I can be reached at 650-377-0217. Good evening and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Evans. Are there any other speakers?
Vice Chair Ebner, there are no more speakers.
We will close the public's comment period and move on to item number two.
Item number two, 500 East Third Avenue, Block 21, public hearing for a proposed six-story Block 21 office residential mixed-use project building at 500 East Third Avenue, Block 21, PA 2021 63.
Thank you. The order of this item is staff presentation, applicant presentation, clarifying questions, public comments, and then commission deliberation and action. The applicant is given up to 15 minutes to present and members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak upon, to speak depending on the number of speakers. So we're ready for you, Rendell.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ebner, members of the Planning Commission. Rendell Bustos, Senior Planner and Staff Planner for Agenda Item Two this evening, a public hearing for 500 East Third Avenue, Block 21, PA 2021 063. So the project before the commission this evening is for a mixed-use project called Block 21, located on the full block encompassed by East Third Avenue, South Delaware Street, East Fourth Avenue, and South Claremont Street, highlighted here in orange. This map also illustrates the location of downtown Caltrain Station, highlighted here in red, which is less than a quarter of a mile from the project site, as well as a lot located at 402 South Delaware Street, highlighted in green, in which the applicant proposes to stage during the project's construction. So here's an aerial more specifically showing the Block 21 site, which consists of 11 existing parcels with a combined site area of 1.51 acres. The general plan's land use designation of this site is downtown retail core support, consistent with the site's zoning designation of central business district support, CBD slash S. There are a variety of existing uses as shown in these images. Existing uses include existing residential units, restaurant uses, retail uses, a gas station, and auto repair facilities. An historic resources evaluation was completed by the city's historic review consultant, who found that none of the existing structures qualified as existing historic resources. I should also note that the applicant will be required to prepare a Phase Two environmental assessment for the existing gas station as part of a proposed mitigation measure. So before moving to the project's current project description, I did want to note that the Planning Commission last reviewed this project as a pre-application last September. The project at this time, shown in the screen, included about 182,000 square feet of office uses, 68 residential units on the fourth and fifth floors, and a total of five stories. And since then, the applicant revised the project primarily to include an additional level of housing, bringing the total residential unit count to 111 units. And this is requested through a state density bonus law concession, which will be discussed in coming slides. And the office makeup remained roughly the same, with the total floor area increasing by about 31,000 square feet as a result of the additional, additional level. So the image on the left shows the project's current site plan, with South Claremont Street to the north, vehicle entries, and the main residential entry are located along South Claremont Street, and office lobby entrances are located along the building's corners, along Fourth and Delaware and Third and Claremont. So here's a roadmap of the coming slides, which are focused on applicable codes and policies. So staff will start by covering the local requirements, followed by state requirements, including state density bonus law. Staff will then cover the project's entitlements, design review, and SEQA review. So beginning with the general plan, the project, as noted previously, is zoned CBD slash S, consistent with the general plan land use designation of downtown retail core support. The bulk of CBD slash S parcels are located east of the downtown, immediately east of the railroad, and these uses generally are meant to provide complementary uses to the downtown core. The zoning code also provides a list of development standards summarized here. Should be noted that certain standards, highlighted in asterisks, have been modified via state density bonus law, which will be covered in coming slides. Specific to off-street parking, the project is within the downtown's parking district, known as the CPID. The project is thus eligible for reduced parking standards with respect to the parking ratio, as well as ways in which the project can satisfy parking requirements. In particular, the applicant requested preparation of a parking demand study by the city's transportation consultant, Fair &amp; Pierce, and that study determined an office parking ratio of 2.06 per 1,000 square feet, which is lower than the zoning code's office parking ratio of 2.6 per 1,000 noted on the screen. In addition, the CPID allows the project to pay in Lufy's for required off-street parking spaces that are not provided on-site. So as currently proposed, a project would be subject to an Lufy payment for 30 spaces. I do want to note that since reviewing the parking study, the applicant has submitted a response letter and occupancy data from their transportation consultant, and that's currently in review with staff. Based on this data, the parking demand study may be subject to revision with a possibly lower parking ratio. Staff does expect to finalize this parking study prior to the city council public hearing, and I'd also note that modifications to the study are unlikely to result in any changes to the site plan or the design. With respect to local policy documents, the project is subject to the downtown area plan, which, similar to the general plan, outlines goals and policies for the downtown core and downtown support projects. Staff has cited policies and goals that the project is found to be consistent with in Attachment One. The pedestrian master plan, next on the list, lists recommendations for sidewalk widths, as well as pedestrian-level improvements, and the sidewalk widths are based on a project's land use and street parking configuration. As listed here, the project complies with the minimum sidewalk widths along its East Third and East Fourth Avenue frontages, but not along South Delaware or South Claremont Streets. It should be noted, though, that the zoning code, which supersedes the pedestrian master plan, requires a zero setback unless a setback is provided for landscaping or open space. So lastly, the bike master plan lists infrastructural improvements to improve and support bicycle use throughout the city. Specific to this project's frontages, a separated bike lane is called for along the South Delaware Street and East Third Avenue frontages, and a bike boulevard consisting of pavement markings is called for along the South Claremont Street frontage. So shifting now to state-level policies, I did want to note that the project is not subject to the Housing Accountability Act, or the HAA, given that the project is less than two-thirds housing. The project does, however, employ standards of state density bonus law. So to start, this is a summary of the project's density limits. So starting on the left, the project's base density is 15 units per acre, which yields the project 76 units as a base density. As noted previously, the project provides 15% of its base density to the very low-income category, which affords the project an up to 50% density bonus, which is equivalent to an additional 38 units. So that provides the project a combined density of 114 units maximum. So as proposed, the project provides 111 units, which is within the combined maximum density. In addition, the project, as a state-sensitive bonus project, is required to replace all existing affordable units on-site, which is six, and so the project complies with that and provides a total of 12. The project is also eligible for reduced parking standards, as well as concessions and waivers. The five, so starting with waivers, the five requested waivers are listed here. Staff has evaluated these waivers and has not made any finding to deny the waivers based on any life-safety impact or conflict with any state or federal law. In addition to the five waivers, the project is eligible for up to three concessions, which the applicant has requested two. The first is to increase the maximum building height by 19 feet, 2 inches, and the second is to increase the maximum floor area ratio by 1.1. So generally, the state requires that concessions result in cost reductions, not have an impact to public health or life safety, and not be contrary to state or federal law. Staff has evaluated the project's density bonus request letter in detail and found that these findings can be made. And as was noted in the project study session in September, one initial concern in evaluating the concession requests, particularly for additional building height, was the potential conflict with Measure Y. Staff has determined, though, that state density bonus law does preempt general plan limits, including Measure Y. The second component evaluated in detail by staff was whether the concessions resulted in a cost reduction. The applicant has provided sufficient information estimating that the concessions result in an approximate 15% savings, which thus make the construction of the affordable units feasible. So shifting gears, next I want to cover the project's list of planning application entitlements. The first is the Site Plan Architecture Review, or SPAR, for the proposed building, as well as two on-street loading zones. It should be noted that because the building exceeds a height of 55 feet, this does trigger city council approval. Next is a Site Development Plan application, which is required for the removal of all on-site and street trees, which the applicant proposes to replace with 27 new street trees along all four frontages. Next is a special use permit for a nearby lot to South Delaware Street for the use of construction staging while the subject Block 21 project is actively in construction. And lastly, a tentative parcel map to merge the 11 existing parcels is requested, to merge the 11 parcels into one parcel. So one critical component of the SPAR application is design review, which staff conducted along with Canon Design Group's feedback, as well as Planning Commission feedback from the study session. The applicant is present this evening, as well as their architect, and we will be providing a more detailed presentation on the architectural design. At a high level, the project is best categorized as contemporary and employs exterior materials such as glass, aluminum, stucco, and cement boards. So here's a set of material samples and colors proposed by the project. Prior to arriving on the final design, the applicant received feedback, again, from the Planning Commission, as well as the city's design review consultant, Larry Cannon of Canon Design Group. The input from the commission at the September study session was generally in support of the design, but recommended larger two-to-three bedroom units, refinement of building corners, and a consideration for less glass and consideration of the neighborhood character. As noted previously, the commission was also in favor of a greater height concession for more housing units, and the input from Larry Cannon specifically are listed here, which related to canopies, cornices, and other specific building elements relating to the residential use. In response to this feedback, the applicant made a number of changes into the final design, one of which included the additional story of housing. In addition, the applicant incorporated canopies, as illustrated in these images, deeper window mullions to reduce the apparent mass of the glass, of the glazing, an articulated residential entry, as well as refinement of the open spaces. Again, the applicant and their architect is present this evening and will be able to discuss specific components of the design. So lastly, on environmental review, staff prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, compliant with SEQA. The ISMND is currently in public review and is scheduled to end on June 7th prior to its final city council public hearing. The mitigated negative declaration also requires adoption of an MMRP and lists mitigation measures to bring impacts, such as air quality, biological resources, and others listed here, to a less-than-significant impact. So in addition, as part of the initial study preparation, staff's transportation consultant, Fair &amp; Pierce, prepared a transportation impact analysis, or TIA, analyzing the project's impact to traffic. The TIA finds that in accordance with SEQA, the project does not result in any impact to vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, and that it meets the city's screening criteria as a high-quality transit area, given its proximity to transit. In addition, the TIA analyzed the project's level of service, or LOS, based on general plan, local requirements. The project does not result in any adverse impacts in LOS. The project does result in new AM and PM peak hour trips, but overall reduces average daily trips, when analyzed against existing uses. Nonetheless, despite the lack of an impact, the applicant voluntarily is committing to implementation of a Transportation Demand Management Plan, or TDM Plan, to further reduce trips. The TDM Plan will be finalized prior to the project's final city council public hearing, but thus far, the applicant has agreed to measures listed here and is considering additional measures to further reduce trips. With respect to public input, staff prepared a public notice mailed at a radius of 1,000 feet, along with specific interested parties. A placard was also placed on the project site and publication into the San Mateo Daily Journal. To date, staff has received about 10 public comments, all of which were forwarded to the Planning Commission. The comments varied, ranging from support for the project and varied with respect to the specific request for additional story of housing. Other comments raised were regarding parking, trees, as well as the building design. So here's a list of next steps on the project. First, this evening, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the city council. Next, the public review period of the initial study will also come to a close on June 7th prior to the city council public hearing, and staff will finalize the project's TDM Plan, as well as the parking demand study if revisions are warranted, as well as the conditions of approval in advance of the city council public hearing, which is tentatively scheduled for June 20th. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend city council adoption of a resolution to approve the project's site plan and architectural review, site development planning application, tentative parcel map, and special use permit, as well as recommend city council adoption of a mitigated negative declaration to assess the environmental impacts of the project. So that concludes staff's presentation. I did want to note an administrative typo specific to Attachment One, draft resolution, highlighting the fact that the project is a public hearing for recommendation to the city council. The few revisions are warranted, so the title of the resolution would be revised, as well as two headings beginning with "Now therefore be it resolved." On Pages One and Two, those will revise to state that the Planning Commission is recommending city council approval. So those edits will be made following tonight's public hearing prior to signature by the chair. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to take questions. Again, the applicant is present this evening and will be providing a presentation. Thank you.
Great presentation, Rendell. Thank you very much. Would any of the commissioners like to ask staff clarifying questions now, or do you want to go directly to the applicant's presentation?
I do have a couple of clarifying questions. So to the vice chair, I, we had a few public comments about the design and the Larry Cannon's recommendations from the design review, and I was, I wanted to ask staff what kind of powers we have as far as recommending as a conditions of approval to make some design changes. What would be the process of that?
So through the chair, as noted, it's not a project under the HAA, so that does allow ability for the Planning Commission to recommend conditions of approval, even if they're based on non-objective standards.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a few clarifying questions through the chair. First, who owns the vacant lot that will be used for the construction staging area?
I'll have the applicant confirm, but it is owned by the applicant.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure there were no issues about using that from the owner. Second question is, what is preventing conformance of the pedestrian master plan along the South Claremont and South Delaware frontages?
There is a conflict, as noted in the staff report, between the zoning code and the pedestrian master plan. What I note is the zoning code does provide an objective standard that the project provide zero setbacks, so essentially no setback along its frontages unless a setback is proposed by the applicant or the designer to integrate for open space or landscaping. The pedestrian master plan, on the other hand, is a guideline document and lists sidewalk standards, again, specific to its use and its street parking configuration. So it, the applicant would be able to, you know, integrate a setback in conformance with the pedestrian master plan, as well as the zoning code. However, that is not proposed currently by the applicant. They've proposed setbacks along the East Third and East Fourth frontages, both in conformance with the zoning code, as well as the pedestrian master plan.
Thank you. And it sounds like a sidewalk would not be considered open space. So if we, if we can't have setbacks unless they're open space, a sidewalk is not open space?
Correct. The open space is specific to private property.
Got it. Thank you. Would anything about this project, I noticed in the staff report, it said that the applicant is not required to build the bicycle facilities along South Delaware Street and East Third Avenue outlined in the bicycle master plan. Would anything about the design of this project preclude those facilities being built in the
No. The project does not result in any reduced traveling width, so it's remaining the same.
Great, thank you. This is a question for the applicant. And there are several public comments about the existing trees on the property, and some of them are obviously located where the building is going to go, but some of them are located on the street frontages. And a few of them seem to be exactly in the same spots where new trees are going to go. So I was wondering if the applicant could clarify what is motivating the decision to replace the existing street frontage trees with replacement trees?
Do, do we want to have the applicant presentation prior to him responding, or is that part of the presentation?
We could do that, yeah.
Thanks.
And I'll save my next question then, for after the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Any other questions to staff? Great. Can we have the applicant presentation, please?
Hello. It is fantastic to be with you. It's been several years since I've, and the weirdest part is that I can't remember who I've seen on Zoom and who I've met in person. So when I first saw you, I thought, oh, I've met them at some point, but I haven't. So it's good to meet you. It's good to be in person. This project has a little bit of a life of its own. As you know, you know, we have a few projects in downtown San Mateo. What do I do, Rendell? Do I have that? Right one?
Through the chair, if I could request that the applicant speak into the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Where's the computer? Thank you. You can always, I can just go next. I'm going to have a fight with the microphone. There we go. So these are a few of our projects existing in downtown San Mateo. The first project we built, and I'll review some of the history, even though it might be old, old news for some of you. We, the first project we did was at the corner of 2 East Third, which was formerly one of the Three Corners projects, two of which have been built. And then the next project was 405, which is the large brick building across from the city's housing project that's being constructed right now. And then, of course, the project that we just completed is essentially next door. And both those last two projects are across Claremont from the project that we've come to know as Block 21. So Block 21 is a project that, quite frankly, we never would have been able to do without the encouragement of members of the community, members of the planning commission, members of the city council, members of the staff, because it was a unequivocal disaster assembling all 11 parcels. There's 40 owners. It took us three years to get all of them in agreement, and several of the parcels seemed impossible, but we really didn't want to have a repeat of the situation that had happened across the street. And so we worked very hard to try and make that happen, and ultimately, a miracle occurred, and we were able to get control of all 11 parcels. So the, the upshot of that is it's, is it gave us the opportunity to spend an incredible amount of time detailing what could ultimately be a cohesive block, and also understanding the danger of, of building, a building that is an entire block long. Because there's a lot of architectural issues that can come up when you have a building that can have that much of an impact to a single area. So Windy Hill is a Bay Area-focused developer. We do projects in downtown submarkets, for the most part, and then we also do a large-scale suburban multifamily projects. We have built buildings, or are under construction in Belmont, Palo Alto, Redwood City, and San Carlos. The only mixed-use buildings that we've been able to build have been in San Mateo. So it's, it's kind of, it's been pretty fantastic from a developer standpoint to be able to actually see mixed-use buildings work and come to fruition. So Rendell talked a lot about the property. Many of you know it. I would say it's, it's, you know, Arco, the tire repair, the check cashier, and Wingfat are the four corners of the properties. That should give you an idea. Variety of uses, from, you know, parking broken-down cars on the vacant lot, to apartments, to homes. There, there was a lot going on, on this block. That number is a little bit off, by the way, so Rendell's right and I'm wrong again. So the office square footage is slightly less than that. It's 179, 560 square feet of office and about 89,378 square feet of residential. The residential units, the prior two projects were mostly studios. Here, two unexpected things happened. Obviously, the most unexpected thing was Planning Commission requesting that we take a look at more density on the residential side. And then further to that, community support, generally speaking, for more density with the residential. And so what, what the upshot of that is, is we now have 58 one-bedroom units and 53 studios. The one-bedroom units range from 675 to 754 square feet, and the studios are 503 to 619 square feet. These, the amenity, so this is a different animal than across the street. Now we have essentially a large-scale apartment community on top of an office building, as opposed to sort of, I won't, I won't say afterthought, but, you know, percentage-wise, a much higher percentage of residential square footage than the prior projects. And so what was the result of that? Well, one is it gave us an opportunity to create a ton of amenities. So outdoor grilling decks, outdoor TVs, outdoor common space, gyms, leasing offices, bike storage, you know, private mailroom. All of these amenities that were really tough to squeeze into the other buildings, because you're trying to, you know, fit amenities in a, in a building that has very few units, we just kind of went hog wild and did every amenity that we thought we could get into the downtown to help support the residents that are going to live here. Some of the other things to note is, the building is now six stories. You know, goes without saying, we're lead silver best practice, like all of our buildings are. The corners were a big deal from a design standpoint. We wanted everything, there's 12 curb cuts on the site right now. We're going to go all the way down to one. There's going to be one curb cut. So from a pedestrian standpoint, that's what this is all about, is, is creating this connection between the residential neighborhoods and B Street, right, or downtown. And part of doing that is making it safer, making it more aesthetic, making it, you know, pleasant, benches, outdoor seating. And so you'll see, as we go through the renderings, we've done all of that, to really make the pedestrian environment much better, and there's a lot of design aesthetic that went into that as well. Let's go to the next one here. All I want to do is get to the renderings, but we got, we got to talk about more stuff here. So, so we already talked about where the increase in units came from. Affordability, we exceed the city's requirement going very low. The upshot of that, just so that you understand, is essentially these units lose money. So, you know, very low, you can maybe break even. These units, every month, the developers is actually losing revenue, because the expenses are going to exceed the rental income for, for the unit. So that's why you may get a little resistance at times from going to low to very low, because they actually go, turn into a negative instead of maybe a break even. Rendell talked well about VMT. I'll skip that. TDM measures, Rendell covered. The nights and weekends parking, that, that's a double-edged sword. We like to think we pioneered that with our first two buildings. We've learned some things. Because of the large-scale residential component, security is very important. There's a lot of residents, and the general public is welcome to use the garage, but you'll see that we have certain measures. We've worked with the staff and the police department to make sure that that number of people, which increases the chances of some sort of issue, we have some things to, to really prevent that. So you, you'll see some of that. We've talked a lot about parking, street improvements. I'll talk more about that with the renderings. And we talked about some walkability. Okay, we're there. So these are completely whitewashed, and it breaks my heart, because in real life, they look way better, and the building will as well. But let's just go with what we've got here. So this is the corner of Fourth and Delaware. And so you'll notice a few things that have happened here. There's various materials. There's GFRC, which is, my laser doesn't work. That's okay. It's the material to the right that looks, that has stridation in it. So that material is perfect. It's made in a factory, and it has no impurities in it, so to speak. It'll have a lot of texture and a lot of interest, but it's very consistent. You'll notice we thickened it considerably at the top, and then we also created depth between it and the white, I'm going to call it stucco, but it's actually going to be a material called ephist, because it's better than stucco. So we created a cornice, but we integrated it into the architecture, rather than gluing it onto the side of a building, which is what sometimes people do. We cut the corners here. That's a very deliberate act, so that as a pedestrian, that corner feels totally different than if you brought the building all the way to the corner. And it creates an interesting area, and it creates better visibility, safety-wise, as pedestrians approach what is, unfortunately, an incredibly busy corner. Delaware, as, and this particular section of Delaware, as many of you know, is, is a very busy corner, Third and Fourth. You'll see, again, you can't see it great here in the distance, you'll see Fourth and These buildings have some similarities. This building is, you know, I won't call it the work of my life, but every section, every segment of this architecture and of this building, I have labored over with our team. This is the, you know, I hate to say the pinnacle of my career as a developer, because I hope I'm, I got some more in me, but heretofore, this will be the highest-quality building ever built in downtown San Mateo, no question about it, by an order of magnitude. It's, it's fantastic. Okay, let's go to the next one. So this is the corner of Third and Delaware. And again, some of the zoom-in renderings give you a much better idea of the outdoor environment here, the seating area, how we tie into B Street. You'll notice that the glazing is considerably set back. So if you're at the pedestrian level, the amount of visible glazing is, is very minimal. If you're across the street, or if you're driving in a car looking for the office entrance, you're going to know where it is. But if you're walking by the building, you're not going to experience that glazing. It's, you know, 20-plus feet recessed, you have a metal canopy at the main lobby hiding that little sliver. You can see, the closer we get down to the pedestrian level, the thinner and thinner and thinner it gets. Again, that's to create a lot of scale for the office entry, because this is a 200,000-foot office building, plus or minus, right, or 180,000 feet. We have to have the ability for people to know which door is the front door for the office use. This, I think, is looking down Claremont. Anyone, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, which, again, it zooms in a little bit more. You see how much thicker the GFRC is at the top, the recess that creates that cornice feel. All these awnings didn't exist, so there's awnings wrapping the whole thing now, again. And, and those are actually, in this building, going to be lit. So at night, they'll have embedded lighting in them. It'll be a really interesting feature from a pedestrian perspective. This is backed, it's a zoom-in of, we're just past the chopped-off corner on Third and Delaware. But again, it gives you an idea what this recess is intended to do at these corners. Opens them up. You can sit down, you can hang out if you're tired, between, you know, B Street and your way home. I'm going to, that looks like the same one, pretty much. Okay, residential entry. I've got two minutes left, so I gotta hustle here. Residential entry was a big Larry Cannon comment, among others, that I'll hit. And so we, we really wanted the residential entry on Claremont. Delaware's too busy, Third and Fourth too busy for a residential entry. And so we really wanted on Claremont, and so you'll see, as you look at this architecture and as we zoom in on it, there's no way you're going to miss it. So anyone coming up to the building, obviously there will be additional signage, but you can see that that's a separate and apart entry for the building. This gives you, you know, some more flavor. Obviously, these are in your packet. This gives you the residential entry from, from the other angle. So I think it's helpful. The upper left is the main lobby, so that's the Fourth and, no, excuse me, Third and Claremont corner. And we'll just, here's a site plan. Rendell already walked you through that. You can see the outdoor seating areas, the open space, and then where the building is pushed up to the property line. We can talk about, I have this, I think that's it, right? So I have this in here, in case you want to talk about it, but I think at that juncture, that is it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. We'll bring it back to the commission now. Do, do we want to ask our questions of the applicant, or would you prefer to hear questions from the public first?
Through the chair, I would suggest we ask our questions first, in case they're beneficial to the public.
Great. Can you please stay at the podium? Thank you, Mike. And who would like to go first?
Through the chair, I guess I'll go first.
Trees.
Trees, yes. So why not keep the, the frontage trees, especially the ones that look like they're being replaced in almost the exact same position?
Yeah. So this comment came up today, and we're absolutely open to keeping trees, especially So, this comment came up today and we're absolutely open to keeping trees, especially in the frontage area. There are some considerations, and so we need to work with staff and with the arborists to understand if the excavation of the garage is going to compromise those trees. You know, if the root systems are lateral, it might be problematic. The interesting thing is the trees are a ways from the property line. They're not where we would place the tree today, but with a wider sidewalk, they'll actually maybe, like you say, be in the right spot. But we need to look into that and understand what we can do there, whether it's, you know, saving them, putting back bigger ones, you know, all those options are on the table. So we'll work with staff in light of that comment and make sure and dig into that.
Great, thank you.
And through the chair, if I may, just on that question. I did want to indicate staff's perspective and the recommendation for approval of the removal. I did want to note the arborist report did indicate, you know, a fair to poor condition of all of this 15 street trees along our frontages. So based on staff's review, staff was amenable to the removal of those trees. In addition, you know, in processing the site development plan application, the applicant has committed to planting new street trees along our frontages would provide a more uniform appearance inconsistent, you know, consistent with the street tree master plan.
Thank you, yeah. That is very helpful. And then my next question, there was a comment, I think it was in the response to Larry Cannon's design feedback, about pedestrian safety around the garage entrances. And the response noted that some changes had been made to increase the pedestrian safety, but didn't go into detail. I was wondering if you could speak in a little more detail about what changes you made.
Off the top of my head, alarms, right? Buzzers basically to notify a pedestrian when a car is coming up. Was there anything else we did in particular architectural wise, or really just an alert system, right? Evan? Yeah, you got to come up here, or you got to tell me and I got to repeat it. Whichever you want. He knows I like to talk.
Evan Sokolowski with ArchTech. Yes, we actually widened the opening slightly as well as relocating the cars, the parking spots along Claremont to spread them out, to give better visibility, again, as well as implementing the electronic system with both visual and audible systems for the alarming of that.
Great, thank you. Those are all of my questions.
Still learning my lingo. Thank you. A couple of questions from me. Noting studios and one bedrooms, did you consider twos and threes? Why aren't there any twos and threes?
So, we really wanted to focus on maximizing unit count, but we also wanted to add, we have a lot of studios across the street. And so basically, our goal, our targeted goal, was to maximize unit count with as many one bedrooms as possible. And so that's where we ended up with the 58, I bet are something like that, one bedrooms. Two bedrooms and three bedrooms, we actually have another project where we're looking at larger units. But in this project, we wanted to maximize unit count in the downtown.
Thank you. There's mention that the parking demand study is still having some adjustments made. I was wondering if you could speak to where you're trying to get with that.
So, and, you know, staff can chime in as well. So the parking demand study is done, but our traffic consultant had done some counts and there was some ambiguity as to what was included and what wasn't included. So we submitted a letter to staff. What we're trying to do is, the prior projects were at the lower percentage and because of the parking demand study that was done, and Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we want to try and stay there because it establishes probably a precedent that's going to continue to be fostered in the downtown and we want to make sure that the numbers are right. And so that's why we have the two traffic consultants communicating through staff to make sure that the numbers are right ultimately.
So, just for clarification, your, the prior projects across the street, I assume you mean, have a parking, office parking ratio that is lower than what the city's consultant does?
2.06.
Lower than 2.06.
Lisa's coming up now. These are good questions.
Lisa Ring, planning consultant. Yes, through the chair, just to speak to the parking issue. Yes, the other projects were done as part, under the city's previous parking code, which has higher numbers. But the, there were, for previous projects in the downtown, there have been studies, actual parking demand studies, and those came in at lower numbers. So when talking with the staff, we thought it would be appropriate to just take a second look at those to figure out if it was more appropriate to have this project parked in accordance with the lower standards that were demonstrated as part of the previous project. And those included counts. And so there's been a little variability just because due to COVID, it's been a little hard to go out there and, you know, do the typical counts or estimates. So we've just been working with staff on that to determine what's the most appropriate parking ratio for this project, specifically also given that the city has new code and goals that they're trying to meet in terms of reduced parking standards in the downtown, the fact that this project is going to have transportation demand measures, and also that this is in a VMT sort of downtown priority area. We, obviously, everybody wants to make sure we get the right parking numbers. So that's kind of a long answer to your question, but that's everything that's gone into this.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
And through the chair, I would just add that, as the applicant states, that information is actively in review with staff. And so if any revisions are warranted to the parking demand study, they would be folded into the city council public hearing. And as noted in the presentation, it's unlikely that it would result in any site plan changes or design changes. If the ratio is reduced, it would likely lower the deficit of on-site parking spaces, so potentially lowering the amount of MUI fees required.
Thank you. Sorry, I have another transit question.
It's okay. I might know this one, we'll see.
Just, is there, for the TDM plan, I understand there's, there are unbundled parking for residential.
Correct.
Is there subsidization of transit passes for residential units, either for the market rate or the affordable? I'm just wondering if that was something that was looked at.
Yeah, so that's something we're looking at right now. Rendell alluded to some other measures that we're looking at to try and increase our impact under the TDM plan. And so we're trying to understand what that looks like right now from that perspective. Obviously, you know, it's something that we offer for the office users, and so we're looking at what to do with the residential occupants, and we'll have that hopefully resolved in the next, you know, week or two.
Okay, thanks.
And through the chair. It was noted, if a transit passes subsidized or provided for residences, it would need to be provided for both the market rate as well as below market rate units, in that they need to be equitable. So it's in accordance with our local code.
Got it, thank you. Last question, was there any consideration of including commercial, by commercial, I mean non-office uses on the ground floor, retail services, things like that?
Yeah, so we have this conversation, you know, every time we, you know, bring a new concept forward. And the focus has really been that this is an area that should support the core retail of downtown, not drag away from it. And we've had a difficult time on the ancillary areas with Class A retail. It just, you know, our building at 2 East Third, we, you know, we lost our retail tenant there during COVID and we haven't had a single interested tenant. And so it's, and because we're on the fringe. And so for us, we said, no, let's put people in the building who will then go into downtown and buy breakfast and lunch and shop and do whatever they're going to do. That's our way of supporting the retail as opposed to creating competitive retail outside the downtown, what we consider the downtown retail core, which would be, you know, B Street, Fourth, Third, et cetera.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you for the information, Rendell and Mike. First of all, I have been to the site and I have consulted with the applicant more than once. You know, it seems like the concessions and the density bonuses, their initial intention for those, that legislature was to increase housing. And initially, it appeared that they were used much more for getting concessions and bonuses, but not supplying housing. So it really looks like it's coming full circle here and the legislator's being used, I think, what it was intended for. So, thank you. It was nice.
And we didn't use them all.
Correct.
We only used the ones we needed.
No, no, no. But I mean, I think that's what the intentions were.
Exactly.
And I think this is a model that has embraced that. So, thank you. I know initially, I think we started out with five or 10 micro units and went to 25 or 30, and here you're supplying 111. So it looks like it's not quite as scary and intimidating as it was at the first.
That's a good assessment, yeah.
Can you tell me, in your other office complexes downtown, the other two, who lives in those units? Is it, who are they? Where do they work?
So, other than the below market rate units, which are occupied by, through the city's BMR program, 100% of the units are occupied by employees who work in those buildings.
Great, good to hear. And with the additional units that you've scheduled into this, the additional 43 units, can you tell me what these units mean to the city, both financially and the impact that they'll have on the community itself?
Well, so when you look, I had the city fees up there for a moment and we can talk about them a little bit, but, you know, we're paying estimated $5 million in commercial linkage fee, you know, 1.2 million in transportation fee, we're paying 2.3 million in park fees. I mean, these are tremendous sums of money, yet by the simple ask of saying, hey, we'd like to see more units, we're able to use the scale, the economies of scale, to build these units in the most economic way possible, vis a vis the city taking our $5 million commercial linkage fee and trying to go put a project together or working with a developer or whatever. And so this density that we're at right now, and even potentially more density, it works. It works financially for a developer to build at these densities and it provides housing and below market rate units at essentially no cost to the city. In fact, it generates more park fees and it generates more fees. So I mean, by doubling the units, you've doubled your park fees, right? So it's kind of the gift that keeps on giving to the extent that the city is open to denser housing projects proximate to the downtown. And now the city can take those fees and go create more housing and go create more amenities for everybody that lives in San Mateo.
Great, thank you for that information. I did have one comment on the trees, and I think Rendell had mentioned that as the tree, that the replacement trees are implemented, that they meet a certain criteria for location and aesthetics. And if it was up to me, I would rather see some trees not perfectly lined up and down the sidewalk. I know people like uniformity, but I think if you have some other characteristics, it may add just as much to the property as not. But those are my questions for now. Does anybody else have any other questions, or should we go to the public? Great.
Vice Chair Abner, I'm just going to wait a few moments. Public commenters? Vice Chair Abner, it looks like there are nine public commentators via Zoom. What do you want us to set the timer at? Through the chair, could you please repeat into your microphone the duration of the comment period?
Can we please set the duration to two minutes for public comments?
Vice Chair Abner, our first commenter is going to be Matthew Thompson. Matthew Thompson, you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me? I see that my, see my two minutes have started, I just want to make sure I'm coming through loud and clear.
You're good.
Thank you, and good evening, Plan Commission. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on this mixed use development. My name is Matthew Thompson. My wife and I are long-term residents of San Mateo and have made it our home for the last eight years and are excited to, you know, stay here throughout our retirement indefinitely. And, you know, really excited to talk about 500 East Third and this mixed use project. We followed it from when it was first proposed. We think it's extremely beneficial and given our A++ for the downtown area for a multitude of reasons, and we'll just touch on a few in the essence of time, you know, it definitely helps solve a much needed housing problem our community, bringing all 111 units that they fought tooth and nail to get. And specifically, it's near public transit, which has reduced major traffic issues, you know, bottom line, less daily vehicle trips, which is great. And what we're really celebrating is the opportunity that, you know, to inject energy into the downtown area. Residents could also be employees in this brand new office space, which is just fantastic architecturally and aesthetically. So, you know, you're injecting vibrancy into downtown, which is needed for restaurants that have obviously struggled throughout COVID. My wife and I are down there for, you know, coffee on the weekends, lunch and dinner. We love the idea that it extends kind of a safer wingspan, pedestrian friendly area for, you know, whether you're walking during lunch or dinner at night. We're excited for that. The last thing I'll point out is it does hit, I think, more than required affordable housing units, which again, another thing that's fantastic, you can have local service workers that are going to, you know, reside the property as well. My time's up, so I'll cut it there, but appreciate it, and A++ from residents here.
Thank you, Matthew.
Vice Chair Abner, our next speaker is Richard Hedges. Richard, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, Chair Abner and council members. I am really high on this project. I lived a block away from it for seven years. I rode my bicycle to work, which at that time was to the Albertson store at Concar and Delaware. And I also worked a second job at the gas station, Raco Station on Delaware. To give you a little history, when I first moved to San Mateo in 1970, the move into downtown was horrific. There were very old and unattractive buildings, all the way on the left-hand side of Third Street coming in, and an old abandoned school on the right-hand side. Since then, we built the first below market rate housing at the corner of Grant and Third, and then the then the Prometheus Development, and the condos where the school was. But when you pass that, you start passing a 7-Eleven, and then you get to the Arco Station, which was an old station when I worked there, and then an adult bookstore right after that. I'm telling you this because the way we front our city coming into the entrance is very important. And this building will add lively views for people coming in, very attractive, and update an area that sorely needs updating. The transit issue, the 92 bus goes along Delaware, the 250 bus comes in from the east side and goes to Caltrain, stops near it, and then goes on to CSM. You have the El Camino Real bus and the number five bus that comes through the area, not to mention Caltrain. So it is well-served by transit, and this is a great place for this building. I think it's a beautiful building, and I'm going to give you about 15 seconds back. Thank you.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is David Light. David, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi. My name's David Light. I've lived here almost 40 years on Fremont Street, and I had written a couple, some emails about the trees, and there's been a lot of discussion, so I probably won't take the full time. But I would like, I know there was an independent arborist who recommended cutting down all 32 trees, but I'm just curious if the San Mateo arborist has gone out and looked at those trees. When I looked at Appendix B, the independent arborist had said, I know, I'm paraphrasing a bit, but that some of the pictures were taken in the winter when the trees didn't have leaves. I mean, if you drive down Delaware now or Fourth Street and look at the trees, they have a nice canopy of leaves, and I'm not a professional, but they look pretty nice to me. So I just appreciate if the city arborist would take another look at some of those trees and, before they get condemned to be chopped down, because it takes a long time to grow a tree. Another comment that was in the independent arborist, something about the grates, the hole in the grates on the sidewalk were too small for the trunk, and those grates are meant to be expanded around the trunk of the tree. But rather than recommending expanding the grate hole, they said just chop the tree down. And the last thing I'll say, I mean, there was some comment about the trees having aphids, they should be sprayed, so they don't drip on the sidewalk, which I've done in my, a tree in front of my house. But again, instead of recommending, you know, spray the trees, the recommendation was chop them down. So I just have, I just asked to take another look, and I was really appreciative that the developer was amenable to keeping the trees if they could be kept. So, thank you.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is Transform Video Two. Transform Video Two, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kendra Ma, and I manage the greenship program at Transform. We are a nonprofit organization committed to transportation and lending solutions that achieve more equitable ways to live and get around while promoting strategies for walkable communities with excellent transportation choices. I'm here to highlight how the Block 21 project achieved our greenship certification, granted conditionally until the project is approved and built with the strategies currently included. Greenship certification recognizes and supports multifamily, mixed-use developments, which implement strategies that reduce traffic, parking, and greenhouse gas emissions while keeping our communities affordable. As you can see in the greenship project evaluation report and letter to the Planning Commission, we evaluated the expected driving by Block 21 residents, and our model projects that future households here are estimated to drive 69% less and emit 28% fewer GHG emissions than the regional average. This project is implementing our traffic reduction strategy of 100% unbundled residential parking, which reduces driving and encourages alternate modes of transportation. This project has a low parking ratio of 0.5 spaces per unit, with parking available to the public on evenings and weekends. Along with ample bike parking, the excellent transit service around the project sites means future residents will not necessarily need a personal vehicle to get around. And this area is serviced by 11 Samtrans bus routes, and the downtown Caltrain station is a mere five-minute block walk away. Block 21 is a welcome addition to the greenship family of projects, and we support this project and the low-traffic strategies it will bring to the city of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is Vince Rocha. Vince, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Vince Rocha. I'm the Vice President of Housing and Community Development with Silicon Valley Leadership Group. We represent over 350 member companies here in Silicon Valley, our largest employers. We endorse this project because it is a mixed-use development with affordable housing that is transit-oriented. It is less than half a mile from Caltrain and numerous bus stops, as was mentioned before. This is the exact kind of urban, smart growth development we envisioned when we supported Measure RR, that ensured that Caltrain had the right funding to run cleaner trains from now until the future, ensuring that people can get to work and can live near downtowns like yours. So we fully support this project. It includes all the elements of housing, affordable housing, and jobs in one project, and believe it'll add a lot of vibrant activity to the downtown. Thank you.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is Ken Chan. Ken, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, members of the San Mateo Planning Commission. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality, affordable homes. First, I'd like to thank staff for all their hard work in putting together their presentation on tonight's proposal, which, by the way, is why I'm here tonight. On behalf of HLC, and as highlighted in our letter to the commission previously, I'd like to express our support for the Block 21 proposal by Windy Hill Property Ventures, which is set to include 111 new homes, 12 of which will be affordable. Its location at 300 South Clermont. These homes have the potential to contribute to a more vibrant downtown, to provide your residents with the option to utilize Caltrain, to get to their places of work, and more importantly, provide additional homes to your city to counteract the jobs-housing imbalance that your residents are collectively experiencing in this moment. We urge you to support the Block 21 proposal and to move it forward to your leaders in the City Council for a decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ken.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is Ally Saberman. Ally, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ally Saberman, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition in strong support of Block 21, which the Housing Action Coalition proudly endorsed. I echo the comments of residents and other housing advocacy groups that this project is not only aesthetically pleasing, but it also adds 111 homes to an area close to jobs and transit, which will in turn reduce traffic and decrease our overall CO2 emissions. Please pass, please pass this project without delay. Thank you so much.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is George. George, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, so, did I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So you're wrong. I did unmute. Okay, hold on. All right. So, nice building, nice architecture, but a couple comments. The setbacks on Clermont and Delaware not meeting the pedestrian plan, I think, are a big mistake. I think the developer said that this, himself said that this is a very busy pedestrian area. I think we should be conforming to the pedestrian plan. If you walk around downtown San Mateo, you know people are just bumping into each other. There's bicycle traffic that hopefully will be rerouted if we do things diligently off the sidewalks. But I think we should have setbacks that are adequate and meeting the pedestrian plan, especially on Delaware, which is a very busy street. You don't want to be backing people closer to that street. It's unfortunate that the building is only studio and one-bedroom units. We really need more family housing in the area. There should be some two- and three-bedroom units in this complex. I don't know if that can be changed at this point. Well, I know it could be changed, but I don't know if anybody has the wherewithal and the will to make that happen, but that would be probably a nicer building if that was, had some family housing in it. I think the developer is wrong about not needing retail on the ground level in this building. There's a lot of units being added here. There are a lot of other units coming up in the area. Basically, there are going to be hundreds of people being added to this exact geographic area, so some local neighborhood retail makes a lot of sense. So I hope that that, that option can be kept open. It's Class A, open floor space. I'm sure it can be done. Parking, you know, I mean, you can talk transit all you want, but walk around north-central neighborhood, and there are cars parked up on the sidewalks everywhere. They fought tooth and nail to prevent a bike path, which I'm, you know, I'm all for the bike path. But one of the ways to make a bike path work is by taking more cars off the streets, and one of the ways to do that is by having adequate underground parking. So, we didn't do it in Kiko. I know we put the large above-ground garage, but it would have been nice to have some underground space there. In terms of trees, the building at 405 East, which I think this developer built, I think he said he built it, it's probably six to eight trees short of what should be there to give an adequate shade to the sidewalk and kind of give a green feel to that space. This, this building also looks like it's short on trees. I think we need more. We don't have to have the old trees that are there. Maybe it makes sense to cut them down, but they are actually pretty old. It's an old neighborhood. But I think we need more trees around this complex. In general, there's-
George, you'll have to wrap it up, please. You passed your two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes is really not adequate for nine people.
Yes, it is difficult. I totally agree, but we don't want to get past the two minutes.
Okay. And the last comment, the very two quick comments, the city should look into maybe doing shared, running utilities up the side of the building for European-type lighting that can be stretched between buildings, because you're now developing large buildings next to each other. That would be an opportunity here. And I think this developer also did a building on the catty corner that had no parking. I think those residents should be allowed to park in this building to take more cars off the street.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is Lori Watanuki. Lori Watanuki, your microphone is still muted. Could you please unmute your microphone?
Okay. How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Lori Watanuki. As you take a look at the current Windy Hill projects and other new developments in the downtown, they're following a repetitive trend of more glass at the upper levels. And we would like to see more of Larry Cannon's suggestions included in the Block 21 design with some more traditional features. Windy Hill built 406 East Third, which replicates a next-door building at 405 East Fourth. And this project, Block 21, also follows a similar design and incorporates more glass. There'll be a fourth Windy Hill project with more of the same. And this design may become dated with so many Windy Hill designs. We'd like to just mention that these recommendations by Larry Cannon would help improve Block 21. The expanse of glass can be removed along Third Avenue and replaced with a solid wall and deep recessed windows. We can remove the large volume of glass on the upper levels of the project, and the lower windows need to hide the cables and the storage, as seen in the building on 405 East Fourth. We would like the projecting cornices to be added to emphasize its two-story massing along the street frontages. There are traditional smaller buildings and single-family homes in this, which surround this area, and this project is very massive. We'd like to see more traditional design elements incorporated. The reversal of color tones in certain areas and extend these darker-tone facade treatment at upper floors, so it looks more like one building. The current design is still overcomplicated. We'd like to see a reduction in the depth of the private residential balconies and to see them recessed. We'd like to see a passenger loading zone on South Clermont and a package storage area for the Amazon deliveries. Also, a high visibility crosswalk at Third and Delaware, since there'll be 1,279 more vehicles. We'd like to add-
Lori, Lori, can you please wrap it up? We've got to move on. Your comments are very well-respected, yet it's time to close.
Two more things. Add long-term bike storage and subsidize transit passes for residents. Thank you so much for giving me that extra time. I appreciate it.
Vice Tribe Nutter, our next speaker is Michael Weinauer. Michael, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I just want to say that I'm really impressed with the level of effort that Windy Hill and Mr. Fields have put into really making a bigger project look great. I do kind of echo a lot of the sentiments of the other letters and commenters in terms of, I would like to see something a little more traditional. I realize it's late in the process, so, you know, there's one particular building on that block that's really the only, one of the only attractive buildings there. It's this nice Mediterranean building, and it's got arches and, you know, colonial, and it's got terracotta roofing, arches, wrought iron fixtures. If there's anything that can be done without sort of, you know, disrupting the whole project, I would appreciate it if Windy Hill and its architects could, could consider that. And then, of course, the, you know, the whole blending into the neighborhood and the pedestrian experience and the trees, right? I mean, I agree with a lot of people that those trees, especially on Delaware, they seem fine. I'm not an arborist, but having a canopy there, and it takes a long time for those trees to establish, if you just go put in a smaller tree. And I do appreciate the Windy Hill's willingness to put in larger trees if they need to cut those down. So I think as long as we kind of strike a balance there and kind of be mindful of that, then it's a great project, and it's going to be a great addition. Thanks.
Vice Tribe Nutter, we have no more speakers at this time.
Great. So we will close the public comment period unless there are any persons in the chambers who want to speak. Then we'll close the public comment period, please, and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and comments. Do we want to get our comments out there prior to looking at the agendized components that we need to address?
Through the vice chair, I'd like to see the agendized components just on the screen, if we can, just for reference, so we can, so I can at least guide my comments according to those. Through the chairs, are there specific attachment or?
Do you have a typical list of the items that you would like comments on from the Planning Commission at this meeting? Or are we just going to comment on the items that we find we have comments on?
I'll look to the planning manager or city attorney, but there's no specific discussion items outlined in the report. The staff is requesting a recommendation ultimately.
items outlined in the report. The staff is requesting a recommendation ultimately, a recommendation to the city council.
That's perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone can take it.
Through the chair, I'll start with my comments. Thank you to all the public commenters.
Oh, excuse me. I'm really sorry. Let me just interrupt briefly. I think David had had a question if the San Mateo Arborist had done any survey work, and possibly there could be some clarification for George on the setbacks. If we could give them answers on that, it'd be great.
Sure. Through the chair, I will start with the questions raised about the setbacks. So yeah, as previously indicated, there is a conflict again in the zoning code, which the project is subject to a zero setback along all frontages, so zero setback unless the addition of open space and landscaping is provided, resulting in a setback. The Pet Plan outlines guidelines, and so if the applicant is amenable to, you know, increase setbacks, that could be a possible revision. We'd look to the commission to provide that direction. Specific to the trees, yes. The city arborists assessed the health of the trees as well as the city's, excuse me, as well as the project's arborist support. And again, the assessed health, at the time they were assessed by the project's arborist was that they were in fair to poor condition, but we'd look to the commission to see if they'd recommend preservation of certain trees and would also request that the applicant indicate their amenable to it.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, Martin.
No, thank you very much, Chair. Yep. Thank you to everyone that commented, that wrote letters. And I will say I have visited the site, and I'm going to run through comments as quickly as I can. Land use, then urban design, then residential, and then parking. So I'm supportive of the extra floor of housing. I think that's in line with the downtown area plan and Plan 2030 policies. I noted in staff's report that according to Plan 2030, that was sort of projected that we would have around 114,000 residents right now. I think we have a good bit less than that, so maybe 10,000 residents under what we projected to have grown to, and that would be four to 5,000 units. So I view us as under-producing housing based on our own city's projections. I think it's good that this developer took the previous feedback, made meaningful changes, and I would, it looks like there's a few more units that could be fit under the density bonus. I would strongly consider supporting those if they were on the table myself. The downtown area plan and the specific land use downtown retail core support calls for commercial uses to support downtown and the neighborhood. I'm struggling if office uses really supports the neighborhood. I think that the spirit of the downtown area plan, if I read the language and I sort of read the zoning that it's referring to, is seeking uses that are probably more retail in nature. But I feel like that's the spirit. I'm not going to point to any particular language. I would just say the downtown area plan calls for an overall good mix of uses, and of course, that doesn't have to occur in every project, but across the district. At some point, we may look at a number of projects that are all office and residential and start to question if we still have that good mix. And I would point to downtown area plan policy 2.6 for that language. Just want to acknowledge that we're losing the retail that's there today that could serve the neighborhoods, and there's a sort of activation that comes from retail. And I would characterize this as a very eclectic mix of retail that creates activation along the street. So obviously, I'm in support of activating those frontages. I think there's a lot of things in the plan that are doing it. I know that retail can be tough to do, and I understand the comments from Windy Hill on that. I just think this is, this side of the tracks is going to start to emerge as its own neighborhood, I think, with its own needs. So looking to the future, you potentially have the loss of more retail in adjacent blocks that's nearby, and so I just want to sort of lodge that as a potential future concern. Urban design, I think the overall building, it probably could have produced a much more interesting character looking back at the downtown area plan's goals, but I do think it's scaled nicely. It's broken down. It's articulated, and I don't have any concerns with it. I think promoting pedestrian activity has got to be more than just landscaping. I think it comes with activation of the building and the interior spaces and the interior exterior. I do note that we have two conditions of approval, 28 and 107, that are going, that should make sure that the glass at the ground level is visible, sort of not fuzzed over or glossed over, and that you shouldn't have obstructions like curtains that can be pulled right down on the inside that would sort of undercut the goals of the transparency. So I'm definitely supportive of those and think we might need to rely on those to get some of the activation that's been discussed. I don't think it matches its immediate surroundings. That can be good. I think there's interest in diversity. And the last thing I'll say on this is just the, I think the residential entry, I think, could be more enhanced. I agree with it being on Clermont. I think it's struggling having the loading and trash next to it. I think that was discussed prior times. I think there could be more enhancements there. And I like those larger balconies. They're bigger. They're more functional. You can actually maybe do something out there. And I think if they look like they're big or bigger than they ought to be, to me, that can add to the uniqueness of a building. On the residential, I personally would like to see more diversity in the units. I appreciate the responses given by developer. And I, overall, I think we're, I feel like we're making progress, but I don't think we're there yet on getting that diversity. Just to be clear, I don't see any reason, I support staff's finding on the waivers and the concessions. I don't see any reason to object to those or not make findings. And then last thing on parking, I, we have a lot of parking stalls, it seems, a lot of parking garages. We have a new one opening at Kiku Crossing. We're going to have Caltrain adding another train per hour with electrification. There's probably more awareness of the growth of e-bikes and other ways to get around. So personally, I think we should be studying the sites that were noted in the Fair and Peers report to try to get real counts and real-time data on the use of parking and look to reduce the amount of parking further. I think that's in line with a number of our city goals. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Through the chair, I guess I can go next. So I'll start with design. I think I mentioned this last time. My personal design preference is for more even, uniform building facades. I personally am not a fan of over-articulated building design. When I think about my personal ideal urban medium-density residential or commercial building, I think about, you know, the six-story houseman apartment buildings in Paris, which are not overly articulated. They're six straight stories down the block up. And of course, there's a little bit of design detail to help separate the mass, but they're pretty uniform. And so this project is not that. I know the developer is very proud of the design, so I don't want to, I don't want to be too harsh here, but we all have our different design preferences. Mine is for more even facades, so I'll just say that. I think there's a few things that you could take from Larry Cannon's feedback. You know, there was one idea of extending part of the darker red facade treatment just to kind of help reduce the articulation. It, I mean, to me, it looks like six different buildings that have all been joined together, and I think that was the intent, to make it appear less scary and less big. But it's just, it's just a different design style than I think is my personal preference. In terms of the balconies, I don't think they should be reduced. I think having outdoor space, private outdoor space is really important for residents, and it should be usable. You should be able, your whole family should be able to sit out there, or I guess if it's a one-bedroom, your small family, friends should be able to sit out there and use it. And I think that will help for the activation of the building and making it feel vibrant and dynamic. So I wouldn't reduce the size of the balconies. I have in my notes, I think there was a design suggestion for roof overhangs and cornices. That's not my personal preference. I think that also adds to the busyness of the design, so I would not add those things. I think Larry Cannon said something about the third-floor setback being really small, and I noticed that too, and I wondered, do we need it? Do we need to set back the third floor? Could we just make that whole thing even and kind of reduce the complexity of the facade? So that might be something to consider. And then lastly, I will note that the residential and the amount of residential, when this project came before us in September, it had 68 residential units, and Planning Commission asked if more residential could be added, and I know that comment was quite surprising. And I appreciate that the applicant went off and considered that feedback. I think after getting over maybe your shock a little bit that we brought it up. And in fact, if I remember correctly, it was within a few hours, the applicant reached back out and said, I think I can make this work. And I very much appreciate that flexibility. Our community really needs housing, and I think it's great that you made it work. Previously, when this project came before us, it had a jobs-to-housing ratio of 13 to 1. I've recalculated it. It's now 8 to 1. That is in line with what San Mateo has been building over the past decade. So since this project came before us, we have more data now. We have census data around jobs over the last decade. We have more construction data. So between 2010 to 2019, San Mateo's jobs-to-housing ratio is 7.6 to 1. So this project is right in line with that. That is still bad. That is making the problem worse, not better. It's going to continue to exacerbate. The housing shortage we have, by my calculations, this project is 488 residential units short to offset the number of jobs it's creating. In 2010, the median home price in San Mateo was around $750,000. Today, it's 2.25 million as of Q1 2022. Home prices, median home prices have tripled in one decade, and that's because we are building one home for every eight new jobs. So that is all to say, I still have grave concerns about the imbalance in jobs-to-housing. That said, you are working within the rulebook you were given. You did what we asked. You maximized the amount of housing that could be built under Measure Y, and I don't blame you for filling the remainder of the space with office because that is the option available to you. And I know I sound like a broken record, but this project is a great example of what happens when you restrict housing development, particularly through density limits, but you don't restrict office development. And I think as we look towards our general plan and we look towards the future, if we want that kind of balanced development in San Mateo, we have to figure out how to change the rulebook. And I know we have some options that we're looking into and how we can do that. So that's my little spiel about the housing. In terms of studio versus one-bedroom versus two-bedroom, I usually advocate for family housing. My family wanted to live in downtown, and we couldn't because there weren't any two- or three-bedroom apartments available downtown when we were looking. That said, now I know over the last decade that we've built one house for every eight jobs. We are in such a housing shortage that at this point, I think it's important to maximize the number of units. And then when we have the space and projects to hit the maximum but increase the bedroom count, we can do that in those projects. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, there's some overlap with Commissioner Patel's comments, so I don't want to repeat things. I do want to say thank you very much for adding all those additional units. They're very much needed, and they will help. It is, it is our rulebook, it is our zoning codes that is producing this kind of development. It is not the developer's fault that we have this proposed building in the combination of uses as produced by this. It's just what the formulation gives us. And it is important that we have good jobs within walking distance of our Caltrain station and have a mix of uses in our downtown because that's the only way that a downtown is actually walkable and sustainable. And you're reaping the benefits of our current codes by being able to build this much office space per housing unit, and I'm not going to fault you for that. It is, under our standards, a good project. I would like, you know, in the future, that we can better adjust for a jobs-housing balance without, you know, eliminating office development. This project is, you know, I'm very grateful for the additional housing units that you've added. I'm very grateful for the very low-income units that you're providing. Those are very hard and very necessary, very needed in our city. So thank you for that. I have some comments about, you know, some public comments that we've gotten, some things that I wanted to mention, and then also kind of get sense from the rest of the commission. I think overall, I'm leaning towards recommending this to the city council. It does comply with all of our zoning codes. It is, it is, you know, adding housing. The things that I am somewhat concerned about is the sidewalk width. However, I'd like to know, I'd like to be able to see what the, that comparison was between the, we had listed what the proposed sidewalk widths were versus what our pedestrian master plan was, if that's something that you could put up. And then the other thing is the street trees that I wanted to touch on. I know it's already been mentioned. So the street trees, to me, it's important that, that if you can save the trees and you're not degrading their future, that you do attempt to. However, if that's not feasible, I would like to see larger box trees replacing them so that we get a fairly mature canopy, and that may end up being more amenable to the construction. But I'm talking like 60-inch box trees to get a comparable size and age of trees. And then I'd also like the applicant to consult with our town arborist for our preferable trees for that location. I have a little bit of concern for the recommended, or the current listed trees in the landscape plan as they're eucalyptus trees, and they're not particularly, they kind of have a brown leaf canopy to them for much of the year. It's not as vibrant and green as some other trees would be, and they may not be the best street trees that our city arborist would prefer. And so I'd like to consult with our city arborist for his preferred street trees for that, if these trees are replaced. And there will be new trees elsewhere, too, on this project. So I think that's important, that we get the right species and size. I wouldn't recommend necessarily going bigger elsewhere where they, with the street tree plantings that are not in replacement of the existing trees, if the existing trees cannot be maintained. But I do think it's important that we get a fairly nice, big canopy early on. Okay. So thank you for bringing up the sidewalk widths. So we have a 13.6 and a 14.6, which is less than the 16-foot minimum. To me, I think that where I lie on this is that we need to get our codes to conform to our guidelines, and I don't necessarily want to fault the applicant for that. It is important that we get wider sidewalks, although for this space, you know, 13.6 might be acceptable. I'd like to understand just if, this is, I guess, a question- just if, this is, I guess, a question, what the path, the walking path width is proposed on South Delaware, if that's possible to produce. You can get back to me on that. I'll continue my comments. So I talked about the sidewalks, the street trees. There was mention about a crosswalk at Third and Delaware. That's a, you know, fairly high-traffic space. And there currently is a crosswalk there. And I would like to see just a quick site plan to understand what is being proposed. Is that possible to bring that up, so we can see what the crosswalk is proposed at Third and Delaware? And as you're bringing that up, I wanted to talk about the Cannon Design Group's comments. So I appreciate what you've done to change the lower two levels facade. Cannon Design Group had recommended cornices, which I liked, given the previous design. But what you've changed it to is acceptable. I'm not going to, I won't push for the cornices now. I think the texture helps in the additional thickness, substantial nature of the building materials looks better. So I think that's acceptable. The big thing that I am having some thoughts about and concerns about is the big glass box that kind of sits on top of the building as designed. And I want to know what the other commissioners think about putting in a condition of approval of changing that to something more akin to what Cannon Design recommended. I think it does just feel just a little bit like the Amadeus movie when he says, too many notes when he's playing. It's just, it's a little bit much as far as the mix of things. I understand this is a whole block-long building, and, you know, traditionally, urban buildings were not this massive, and so breaking up a building is helpful. But there's so much contrast that it's almost, it's almost too much for me. And so I just want to kind of poll fellow commissioners, what they think about adding as a condition of approval, a recommendation to the council that we would change to what the Cannon Design had for that big glass box. Go ahead, please.
Through Vice Chair Ebner, I will just note that as the commission considers possible additional conditions of approval, it's important to ask the applicant for feedback on those conditions, since it is the applicant's project, and they should be heard on those changes to the project.
Yeah, thank you.
So Adam and the rest of the commissioners, is that the only architectural feature that we would want to consider, asking the applicant how they felt and why they did not follow Cannon's guidelines?
Yeah, there was also a few others that I liked in Cannon's design recommendations that were not so important to me that I would necessarily ask the applicant to change. But I did like having the roof overhang on top. But I can, it's not something that I'm like super tied to.
So this would not be against procedures if the applicant came back up for questions?
I don't believe so. I'll look to the city attorney to confirm.
Through the chair, I think we should discuss it first.
Yeah.
I would be interested in discussing it first before we...
Right. And I'm not trying to like force one aesthetic way or another. I just want to know what the interest is from fellow commissioners.
If I may address the procedural question, it is completely fine. It's actually required as a matter of due process for the applicant to address potential additional conditions of approval.
And through Vice Chair Ebner, if I could add a comment that the commission could also consider in, as an option, that instead of a condition of approval, providing direction to the applicant and making a recommendation to City Council on what design changes you would like to recommend, and the applicant could then utilize the time between now and the City Council hearing to propose something additional if they would like to incorporate those design suggestions before it goes to council.
Thank you. I like that option if we so choose.
Okay. So how does the rest of the commission feel about proceeding with the discussion on that architectural feature?
Through the chair, I think we should discuss it. My personal opinion is that I don't mind the glass. I like the amount of natural light it will bring into the building, and I'm not concerned about privacy or anything like that. My, as I said before, my preference is more of just simpler, less articulated design, and I could see glass continuing to wrap the building in that way if it was used in a less articulated fashion. So I'm not, TLDR, I'm not opposed to the glass. In general, I ascribe to the Coco Chanel theory of design, which is always take one accessory off before you walk out the door. So I'm always for simplification, and like I said before, I did not agree with the recommendation for the roof overhang or the cornices for that reason. It just feels like more.
And Martin, your input?
Yes, thank you. I'm also happy to discuss it. I did not personally agree with the Cannon direction. I lean towards the glass, and if I recall correctly, I believe the applicant did make some more subtle changes to the mullions, the articulation of it. And I liked the direction that was headed. For me personally, I'm still happy to discuss it, though.
Okay. I think we are discussing it. Thank you. I was surprised that the amount of Cannon, the amount of the Cannon comments were not addressed or brought into the building. Most of the time, Mr. Cannon's recommendations do end up being incorporated into the design. So I felt that the applicant must have had some pretty strong feelings about why they did not want to go and follow a lot of his recommendations. I don't have a problem with the design as it is now at all. I think that to support Adam's thought is that if we wanted to ask the applicant to address it prior to going to the City Council as a recommendation, I think that would be appropriate and probably the easiest way to address it, still leaving the window open and letting council know that this is something that the commission would at least like to have the applicant consider. Are we good with that?
Yeah, I think that would be good. I don't also, again, I don't want to force that onto the commission. So I, yeah. So again, if anything, or at the most, it would just be, you know, if the applicant would be okay with providing the council with two options, perhaps, where they keep this glass and then kind of see what the community comes out and says.
So is this where we ask the applicant if they would like to participate in this exercise?
Yes, that is correct. And Vice Chair Ebner, just a reminder to speak into the microphone as you...
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Through the chair, responding to your one comment about you being surprised at how much of Larry Cannon's design feedback was not incorporated. I believe in multiple other study reviews, I have personally said that I often disagree with Larry Cannon's design feedback. So if the applicant had been watching those meetings and paying attention, that could have possibly motivated the decision, given that a few of us have said in the past that there are one or two of those recommendations that we haven't always agreed with.
Yes, I am. When I read it, I had pretty much blamed you. I'm only kidding you. Would you like to respond?
Yeah, I, Creighton Myrtles.
Yeah, that was one of two species that I saw on the landscape plan.
Those should be all Creighton Myrtles.
Okay.
And setbacks, that was another question. It's, you know, you got a street, you got a sidewalk, bike lane, parking. So the city has the leeway, and I just do what I'm told on the sidewalks, and then on the glass. So every single comment that Larry Cannon made, we consider and we go through. And oftentimes, Larry's comments make our design better. And sometimes, it's very difficult to incorporate some of the things that he wants to see when you've got a very complicated building with multiple entries, different uses, all this other stuff. At the end of the day, we need the natural light, because I know that everyone thinks this building has a lot of windows, and when you consider the bay depths, that's why we cut the middle of the building out. So we literally create an empty gap in the middle of the building just to bring in more natural light. And so our goals with that corner were to distinguish the office entry, to bring in more natural light, and to make it invisible to the pedestrian. And so when you see it from back, when you're, you know, two blocks away or whatever, or if you're in a helicopter, you'll see that glass corner. But if you're walking into the downtown Up Third, you're not going to get a sense for what that glass corner is doing to the interior of the building, which is shedding a lot of natural light. So, you know, we've spent a year and a half designing the building, and we're, I mean, if the question is, am I interested in redesigning that corner, the answer is no. You know, I think we did our, I think we did our job.
Okay. Thank you. And I see that I am one commissioner, so I'm not going to push the issue.
Through the chair, may I ask a question of the applicant? Sorry to make you keep running up and down. I assume as the, you will operate the building after it is opened.
Yes.
You will have control over the shades, because it would be terrible if any Leesys then installed shades and just covered up all that glass.
Yes. And so we have a similar condition in 406 East Third, where the main level had to remain visible and open. And so same here. The nice thing is, the way, if you look at the shade diagrams, that glass is in a good spot as far as that goes.
Great, thank you.
Oh, can we see the site plan, just to look at the crosswalk?
Yeah, so through the chair, I can bring up the site plan, but it does not show the crosswalks, in that the project at this time, at least in the plans, does not show a proposal for the addition of high-visibility crosswalks on Third and Delaware. So would it be more helpful if I showed something on Google Street View, just to show the existing condition?
Sure. Yeah. Can we first see what the site plan shows and then go to that? Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is what I was thinking it was. Okay, so I am, you know, walking in this area all the time, and I always want to make sure that I'm seeing my traffic. And so having this one crosswalk not be a bulbout is, I'm just curious why that is. And if there's some way that, you know, Public Works can, could help answer this before it goes to council, you know, what is going on at that one corner, why it's not a bulbout like the Claremont street corners? I don't know if the applicant can answer that.
Yes. So we didn't want to preclude the bike lanes here, and Delaware calls for a pretty substantial bike lane. And so that's the reason that there's no bulbout there. As far as high-visibility crosswalks, we're completely, you know, as we've shown with other projects, pedestrian improvements are total priority for us. Now, high-visibility crosswalk, I don't really know what that means. If that means flashers and buzzers and stuff like that, I don't think that's because there's a stoplight there. I don't think that's what would be needed. It would be, you know, push buttons and, you know, maybe additional, I believe that intersection already has like the walk thing and all that. So it'd be push buttons, truncated domes, you know, whatever. But I believe the reason that bulbout wasn't created is because the right-hand turn, or because of the turn lane, and also to not preclude the bike lane. But that's, take my word for it, which isn't worth much.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, it feels like we should probably get Public Works's opinion on that. I know that, having talked to the bicycling community about the North Humboldt bike lanes, they have mentioned that the fact the bulbouts were installed first makes it so that at every intersection, the bikes have to merge back into the traffic lane to get past the intersection, and that's obviously not safe or ideal. So we should be careful and thoughtful about how we deal with these intersections and potential future bike lane uses.
Okay.
Sorry, pardon me. Through the chair, we have our Public Works engineer on Zoom, and he has his hand raised.
Okay, thank you.
To the chair, hi, this is Bob Akaduri at Public Works. The reason that we don't have a ballbut at that corner is, first of all, the pedestrian master plan do not call for it, ballbut at the corner of Delaware and Third Street, just because of the bike lanes, improvements, and everything else. And to do, just to go ahead and put a ballbut in that corner, it's going to go ahead and have an impact on the rest of the corners of the intersection. That might be the main reason that the pedestrian master plan did not call. But we can look into it with transportation and see if there's, it can be adjusted.
Great, thank you. Thank you. I don't have any other comments on this.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Any further comments or questions? Great.
Sorry, through the chair, I have one more, which is that I didn't address the trees in my comments, and my preference would be to, I'm not an arborist, to rely on the city arborist's recommendation. And so if the city arborist says that the trees are in poor condition, I would trust the city arborist's opinion on what is the best course of action, whether it's to preserve or replace.
Yeah, the, so I'm not an arborist, but I am a landscape architect, and the canopies look very healthy in the trees, but the trunk structure is somewhat suspect. So that is what I gain from, I mean, I go by there fairly often. So that's probably what is being highlighted. I don't have the arborist report memorized, but that's what I notice in those particular trees.
Thank you. So I don't think that we will ever see the perfect project brought forward. As my fellow commissioners have mentioned, this is the best we can do under the current zoning conditions and what makes sense. I really appreciated all of the public input and the organizations that have commented on this project. I think we had 10 people who spoke this evening, and it's the first time I've seen a 10-0 vote, which was all in favor for the most part. That's pretty impressive. This is a complete change of projects that we have done downtown. It's being well-recepted, accepted, and that rings really true to me that we're moving in the right direction. So I do not have any particular comments on this project. So I do not have any particular comments on this project. I think that it is a fashionable architectural design. I still feel, sorry, Mike, that some of it is mirrored from across the street and I wish there was some more separation. Yet I'm not going to debate the architectural features at this point because it is acceptable to most people. Thank you. I do want to acknowledge the developer for implementing the full suite of suggestions the planning commission brought forward at the study session. Taking the effort and time to navigate through the labyrinth of state and local housing laws has paid off handsomely for the city of San Mateo. This project lays out the game plan on how to meet the sometime competing goals of housing advocacy organizations, environmental institutions and neighborhood associations. The study session became the subject of a special city council meeting to address the validity of the planning commission discussing increasing, increasing housing at this site. Because the commission was willing to ask the hard questions around housing and job imbalance, we now have a project with 43 additional housing units that works within the confines of all local and statewide regulations. I am not aware of the outcome of the city council's study session, yet what I do know is we have a much better project per the outcome of the planning commission's study session. I want to specifically thank my fellow commissioners who spend hundreds of hours a year, not just on local projects, yet also on the intricacies of federal, state and local land use laws, and then use that knowledge to assist in building a more resilient and equitable city. This project also helps the city meet its Rena cycle six requirements, demonstrating yet again, this commission's commitment to work on both long-term and short-term policy actions, all the while keeping the city's best interests in mind. I will be very proud when I pass by this development, knowing that because of this commission's fortitude, there will be 43 additional homes that hundreds of families will enjoy over the next 30 years. So thank you to all participants who have put their time and effort into this very important project downtown. Do we, do we want to move to the resolution to move this forward?
Yes, I do want to clarify before we go there. I, I had recommended a 60-inch box trees, but I would not recommend that for crepe myrtles. I think 36-inch is acceptable because just in the nature of that type of tree.
Thank you. So who wants the honor?
Through the chair, I guess this is for staff. Is there specific language you would like us to use?
Through the chair, yes, we will pull up the slide with the recommendation in a moment.
Perfect.
Through the vice chair, while Rendell pulls up the slide, one option is if you want to move the staff recommendation and if you have any other changes to that or leave it as is, you don't have to repeat the entirety of what's on the slide. You can just say the move the staff recommendation if that's more efficient.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to, to move this staff recommendation forward.
Great, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And through the vice chair, would that be with the changes that Rendell mentioned to the resolution to make it clear that it's a planning commission recommendation to council?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I just want to make sure the, what exactly was that?
Verbiage that, that Rendell needed to change.
Through the chair, yes, it was to attachment run the resolution mainly to include revision indicating that it's a planning commission recommendation.
Yes, thank you.
To the council.
I repeat my motion to move forward the staff recommendation.
And we have a second?
I second.
Vice Chair Ebner, would you like to take a vote?
Yes.
Okay, Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Ebner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Thank you. This item is closed. Can we please take a five-minute break?
Next is item number three, pre-application review for a proposed five-story office and residential mixed-use building at 477 Ninth Avenue, PA 2022-004.
Through Vice Chair Ebner, I believe there is a sign for the Zoom participants that says planning commission is on a short break. So please, let's give it a minute for that sign to be removed. There you go. Thank you.
So we're back. Great, thank you. So we will have the introduction to, what is the item number, Ashley?
Item number three.
Item number three, please.
Item number three, pre-application review for a proposed five-story office and residential mixed-use building at 477 Ninth Avenue, PA 2022-004.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Vice Chair Ebner. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Let me advance my slide. Linda Lee, Associate Planner, and I will be presenting on agenda item three, an informational study session for 477 Ninth Avenue, a mixed-use development project, PA-2022-004. The project before you tonight is a proposed mixed-use development located at Ninth Avenue and South Claremont Street. It is located adjacent to the Caltrain Railroad Corridor. The downtown Caltrain station is about a half mile north of the project site. The project site consists of one parcel that is 1.6 acre in size. It is bounded by South Claremont Street on the east and Ninth Avenue on the south. The site has a general plan land use designation of executive office and lies within the E2-2 zone for, as shown in the zoning map here, and represents executive office use. The project site contains an existing office and surface parking lot. Surrounding uses include two-story auto service shops on the north, the Caltrain Railroad Corridor on the south, a plant nursery and a two-story commercial and residential building on the east, and two-story offices to the west. The project proposes demolition of an existing office for a new five-story mixed-use building. This would be approximately 209,000 square feet in size. The first and second floor consists of 28,100 square feet of office space and includes lobbies and parking facilities. 120 rental units are proposed on the third to fifth floors. Of the units proposed, 15% or 12 units will be made affordable at the very low income level. The proposed unit mix is 24 studio units, 64 one-bedroom and 32 two-bedroom units. The project includes two levels of above-grade parking located within the rear portion of the building. This includes 48 office stalls on the first level and 120 residential stalls on the first and second level. The site has a two-way driveway with access from South Claremont Street and Ninth Avenue. The following slide shows applicable code and policies. In addition to the general plan and zoning code, the project lies within the downtown area plan, South Claremont Subarea. The project is also located within the central parking improvement district, which allows the project to opt for a parking demand study to determine project-specific ratios for the proposed offices. This study would be done during the formal planning application stage. The project may pay in lieu fees for the office stalls if the study determines that the district can absorb additional parking demand. Overall, the project meets building height, setbacks and bicycle parking standards. Other aspects such as floor area ratio, density and residential parking are proposed for modification under the state density bonus law. Additional policy documents include the pedestrian master plan and bicycle master plan. These documents provide guidelines to improve the public realm. This includes minimum sidewalk widths of 16 feet to 26 feet and maintaining an existing bike lane at Ninth Avenue and a future Class III bicycle boulevard on South Claremont Street. The city's inclusionary housing program and commercial linkage fee apply as well. And the purpose of this fee is to offset future demand for affordable housing due to the addition of new workers or visitors anticipated. As a project with at least two-thirds residential script footage, the project is subject to the following state laws. First, the Housing Accountability Act limits the city from denying or reducing the density when all objective development standards are met. The project has also submitted a preliminary housing application under Senate Bill 330. This prohibits the city from conducting more than five public hearings and imposing ordinances and standards adopted after the application's submitted date. Lastly, the project includes a state density bonus request to increase the base density from 50 units per acre to a proposed density of 75 units per acre. The dedication of 15% or 12 of the base 80, or 80 base units as affordable at very low income would entitle the project to 50% density bonus. This allows 40 additional units and results in a total proposed 120 residential units. Currently, the project proposes utilizing the statewide reduced parking standards for a minimum half stall per residential unit. The project would provide one stall per unit currently. Lastly, two concessions to increase the floor area ratio limits and to reduce aggregate open space requirements are requested. Prior to this study session, the applicant held a virtual neighborhood meeting last month that was attended by 13 community members. City staff have also received six public comment letters to date. Public input heard so far include building height and size and its contrast to existing neighborhood scale, concerns for parking, traffic and congestion, requests to preserve all existing oak trees, feedback on the architectural style and consideration for more family-sized units. This evening, staff requests that the commission provide feedback on the following discussion topics: building design, site and landscaping plan, and lastly, other comments that the applicant should consider as they revise the project for the formal application. The first discussion topic for building is design. The project proposes an early Spanish Mission Revival style. This is defined by the large arch openings along the street frontage. The building also features a low mancered roof form and parapet that resembles traditional bell towers that are commonly found in this building type. The project elevation drawings shown here shows that the building base is composed of a cast stone concrete material and large openings that define the first and second floors of offices. The upper three floors consist of a smooth sand cement plaster for the residential units above. These materials are consistent throughout the building facade. However, staff would like to note that there are minimal details currently proposed along the railroad track and north elevation. These are samples of the materials being considered for the building exterior, railings, awnings and roof. Another element of design is the proposed mass and scale. The general plan urban design element directs new multifamily projects to respect existing neighborhood scale. Projects are recommended to break up the building facade or step back the upper stories in order to match existing building heights in the neighborhood. Currently, the five-story building is significantly taller than adjacent two-story offices and commercial uses that surround the site. At this time, the planning commission should provide input on this and consider the effect of the proposed building in relation to the surrounding neighborhood. of the proposed building in relation to the surrounding neighborhood. Staff have prepared the following questions to guide discussion on this project. First, focus on style. Focus on style, design elements, and massing of the building in relation to the surrounding neighborhood. Also, how should the building improve the west elevation along the railroad tracks? It is important to note that, under the Housing Accountability Act, the commission may provide recommendations. However, the project is required to comply with objective design standards only. The second discussion topic relates to the proposed site plan and landscape improvements. The Downtown Area Plan provides guidelines to enhance the pedestrian and visual connection from the South Clermont Subarea to the downtown retail core. The project proposes improving the street frontage with new sidewalks, street trees, landscaping, and pedestrian-scale lights. Further details and drawings are expected to be developed for the formal planning application. The city zoning code also requires a minimum 20% aggregate open space, and the project currently proposes 16%. This is proposed in the form of a public plaza, improved street frontage, and landscaping along the driveway on-site. The applicant has stated that additional open space is provided within the building and includes a roof deck and courtyard at the second level. As mentioned earlier, the project anticipates reducing aggregate open space requirements through a state density bonus concession request. The pedestrian master plan provides additional guidance to further enhance the pedestrian realm. The project is subject to the mixed-use sidewalk standard shown on the left, which recommends an overall sidewalk width of 16 feet to 26 feet to accommodate a planter-verniture zone, a pedestrian-through zone, and additional frontage zone. The project currently proposes a 12-foot wide sidewalk, which is less than the recommended width. However, the project does provide the recommended planter and pedestrian-through zone. Although the frontage zone is not provided, a public plaza is proposed at the Ninth Avenue building entrance. Currently, the project meets the minimum building setbacks, which is seven-and-a-half foot, and additional sidewalk width would require the project to step back the building further. For this topic, staff would like the commission's input on the following. Does the project accomplish a transition from the railroad tracks to the downtown retail core? What additional treatments should be considered for the public plaza for seating, bike parking, and art elements? Lastly, what should the applicant consider to further enhance the pedestrian realm in this area? Lastly, staff requests input on other project elements necessary for the commission to make positive findings during the formal planning application. The following entitlements are anticipated and include a site plan and architectural review for the proposed building, a site development planning application for tree removal, and a special use permit to allow residential use. To summarize, staff would like the commission input on these topics that relate to building design, site plan, and landscape, and other project aspects. We can refer back to this slide once discussion begins. So this concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions that the commission may have. The applicant is also here tonight to present and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any clarifying questions to staff now, or do we want to go to the applicant presentation?
I recommend we go to the applicant presentation, if that's acceptable.
Ready to go with that? Sure. Test? Perfect. Good evening, commissioners. It's good to see you all here in person, and we're pleased to be here before you today. I'm joined by my architecture team, BDE. We'll start here with just a quick, quick intro on our team. Having the same trouble.
My name's Stephen Siri. I'm a principal with the Martin Group. It's a real estate development company that's been around for about 35 years in the Bay Area with experience in office, retail, and multifamily development. We've partnered with BDE, our architect, on this project. This will be our sixth project. We've done five projects together thus far throughout the Bay Area comprising about 1,000 residential units, and our office is in downtown Oakland. BDE Architecture has been around for about 25 years and brings about 100 projects and 20,000 residential units of experience, including four in San Mateo, and their office is in San Francisco. Some of this might be a little bit repetitive, but again, the project's 1.6 acres, located in downtown San Mateo, we're about a half-mile from the Caltrain Station, or a short 10-minute walk, so we do believe that our project's location should promote walkability, bikability through the transit-oriented development location. Here's an existing shot of the current office building that's approximately 21,600 square feet and a surface parking lot. As you can see on the left-hand corner of this picture, there is one of two heritage oak trees. That is something that's been brought forth. We have currently already preemptively started working with an arborist for these elements, and our goal is to preserve both of those. There may need to be some minimal pruning, but we'll continue to refine those details in the formal entitlement application. A quick overview just on some of the statistics. As mentioned, it's 120 residential units with 20% studios, 52.5% one-bedrooms, and 27.5% two-bedrooms. I'll talk about the unit mix and how we arrived there in a minute. We also include 12 very low-income units, which might be noting that's a deeper density at very low-income units beyond what the city's affordable housing program requires. Additionally, it's worth noting, the project is five stories with a maximum height of 53 feet and 6 inches, which comes below the 55-foot mark, which is Measure Y compliant. We are utilizing the State Density Bonus Law, which allows us to go higher than that. However, we went to great lengths through our design process to try to minimize going above that mark, just knowing how important height is relative to the neighborhood. We will be adding a net of 6,500 square feet of new office. Again, there's a one-story office building there, so a total of 28,100 square feet of office space, including 48 office parking stalls as well as 120 residential parking spaces, which equates to about one per unit. And then there's 142 bicycle parking stalls. One thing I would also like to note just about this project is, through the combination of residential and office, we will be adding net housing units, which I think is a unique aspect of our project relative to some other ones that you've seen for us, so we will be helping the housing jobs in balance. At this time, I'll turn it over to our architect just to walk through some of the initial renderings.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Nathan Simpson with BDE Architecture. Let's see here. All right, so we're going to start with a plan today, and Linda, you went through a lot of this, so I'll kind of brush over it. We do have 12-foot sidewalks to compensate a little bit for the sidewalk widths. We did add the public plaza. That did adjust the massing on the building to create a little bit more interest and variety. So along Ninth, you do get that, along that frontage. Along Clermont, we do know that's a long frontage, and we are hugging that frontage pretty heavily, but we do have a very large heritage tree there that will help break down the building mass. And also, along this frontage, you have similar-sized buildings, at least frontage-wise, so scale-wise, the building's more or less in line with the larger warehouses that are adjacent. But to the point of, we do have smaller buildings around us, especially along Ninth. Just driving between here and there, you can see them. We do have the building massed down at that corner up against the railroad. We do have a roof deck, so we did put a lot of effort into Ninth Avenue, trying to make that as massed down and visually interesting as possible versus just being a mass of just a big box. And then, of course, along the back of the building, we do have garage circulation. There's two intakes for the garage. One is off of Clermont. It's about 40 to 50 feet back from the street, and then you can also see a little driveway off of Ninth Avenue near the railroad tracks. So we have two garage entries, two curb cuts. Those are existing curb cuts, and what we've done is created in-garage circulation so the site can circulate vehicles on-site. So queuing doesn't happen out on the street. It would happen within our site, so we're trying not to impact traffic. And then there are two primary entrances. You can kind of see them covered colonnades. One is up against the Ninth Avenue Plaza, and then the other one is for the actual commercial space, which would be over up on Clermont near the heritage tree. Going through some of the landscape imagery, I know some of this was already seen. We are looking to do benches all along the plaza, raised planter beds, accent paving, all the normal things that you would see in a pedestrian enhancement. I think we would just be looking to see what you guys would want as any extras or any input. Looking at the elevations, we are a Spanish Revival. One thing to note is, we initially submitted a more industrial building because we were looking at the industrial buildings near us. That style came off as very massive, mainly because when you do an industrial building, you don't get a lot of sloped roofs. So we looked at that very heavily, worked with planning, and really thought about it, and we came back with a Spanish style, which we thought was more appropriate. One thing to note is, BDE has worked in San Mateo before. We did the Morgan, and we also did the Azara, which are both Spanish Revival buildings that I think we had pretty good success with. So that's where we're leaning to this one. A lot of elements on this are very subtle. We're not doing white. We are using an off-gray, so the building will look clean over time. It won't stain as much. There are smaller detail elements that are trim, Juliet balconies in small locations, smaller details that make the building more residential in scale versus being larger and commercial. And then if you look at this other corner right here, a lot of times you would do a strong corner at the corner of the building. We chose to mitigate that a little bit and put the tower over near the plaza, so we anchored the plaza as a more special point of the project, and then we let the corner of the building be a little bit more subdued. We didn't want it to be as loud, because we do acknowledge that it's a big building for the area, and we do know that there's residents nearby, so we didn't want to make it taller. And I think that might be our last slide. We're trying to be kind of quick because it is late. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So our option is, do we go to public questions now and then bring it back to the commission?
Ed, does anybody have questions? I think.
Through the chair. Again, I have some tactical questions that might be beneficial for public commenters to hear before they comment. Thank you. First question is for the staff. I know that you touched on this briefly in your presentation about the protections this project has under the Housing Accountability Act, but I was wondering if you could specifically speak to the protections with regards to building intensity and changes that would decrease the housing density?
Yeah, through the chair, I can start off, and if the city attorney wants to add on. So the Housing Accountability Act limits the city's ability to deny or reduce the density of the project.
Does that include height?
So the project would only be required to meet the objective standards, and so the city zoning code has building height limits, which it currently meets.
So, okay, thank you. So the project currently meets the height standards for the zoning, and so the city cannot require the project to reduce its height?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Nick, I'll go through all my staff questions first. I read in the staff report that there is a setback required by zoning of seven-and-a-half feet. Is that correct? I think I asked this question on the previous project, but are we allowed to, are we allowed to allow the applicant to eat into that setback if they are extending the sidewalk width?
Yes, so confirming that the building setback along the street frontage is seven-and-a-half foot, and the applicant could request a density bonus concession to reduce that.
Great, thank you.
If I could add to that through Vice, to Vice Chair Ebner, so the seven-and-a-half is a setback requirement, which means that the building has to be at that location or can be at that location. It doesn't prevent the applicant from proposing a deeper setback that's beyond seven-and-a-half feet as well.
Correct. But it sounds like the applicant could ask for a density bonus concession to reduce that setback and then use that reduction to extend the width of the sidewalk.
Absolutely.
Great.
Through the chair, staff would also like to add, if they make that concession request, they need to demonstrate that it's necessary for construction of affordable housing.
Ah, thank you. A very important point. Okay. The staff report notes that the multifamily design guidelines recommends a transition when the proposed building height exceeds adjacent properties by more than one story. Do the design guidelines recommend or require? I know that this has tripped up some projects in the past, so I want to make sure we are very clear on what is recommended and what is required.
They are recommended design guidelines.
Thank you. Great. This question might be for staff or it might be for the applicant? I'm not sure, which is, I didn't notice any temporary biking facilities on any of the site plans. I don't know if temporary biking facilities are usually provided by the city or provided by the developer, but I was wondering if there was a plan for temporary biking facilities?
The project actually has 10 temporary bike stalls. It's in the public plaza, if I remember correctly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Last question. This is also for the applicant. Sorry to make you keep getting up and sitting down. I noticed on your site plan, there are existing eucalyptus trees that will be preserved. My understanding is that eucalyptus trees are an invasive species with a shallow root structure. I know there's been a lot of problems with them in Burlingame, where limbs fall and have killed people, so I'm curious why we're preserving eucalyptus trees and if the city arborist has provided input on that.
So we, we have just started working with an arborist, and the two trees, there's two heritage oak trees that we've been, we're looking to preserve. They're really quite, quite beautiful. As it relates to the eucalyptus, eucalyptus trees, we have not finalized that with an arborist yet, but we'll note your comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all of my questions.
Thank you, Seema.
Through the chair, I had a few clarifying questions. First, probably to staff, the, and thank you to Commissioner Patel for asking, ask a similar question, maybe a different way, make sure it's very clear. If the multifamily design guidelines suggest scaling back the mass or stepping it back even further than what the required setback is or what, what you technically would have to, to do, if you make a recommendation to, to step it back further, to be more in conformance with the guidelines, would that be viewed as an objective standard that was being asked of the applicant? And you probably know why I'm asking, but does that make sense?
Yes, that, that makes sense. So... Sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Do you mind repeating your question again?
Sure, and maybe I'll make it a bit more clear if I'm, if I'm capable. If, if the multifamily design guidelines suggest further setbacks or setbacks beyond the required in order to be more in, let's say, harmony with the existing neighborhood or whatever exact language is used in those guidelines, if that recommendation were to be made by Planning Commission, would that be an, an objective sort of standard that was being applied, and would the applicant have to abide by it?
Yeah, thank you for repeating the question again. So the multifamily design guidelines, they are recommendations. Currently... Currently, you know, whatever objective design center that the city has in place, that is for the building setback, the height. But the design guidelines do serve as a guide to improve the neighborhood compatibility. And I guess just a quick history about the multifamily design guidelines. It was developed, you know, in the past, because we did see single-family neighborhoods or lower-scale neighborhoods transitioning into higher density. And so these guidelines were meant to provide that improvement of the relationship from lower-scale to higher-scale buildings.
And through Vice Chair Ebner, if I could add to that, so the transition, as Linda pointed out, requirement, it's really a guideline. It's not an objective standard that can be required of the applicant. However, if the Planning Commission wants to provide guidance to the applicant to improve the design, to enhance compatibility with the neighborhood, the commission can certainly provide that feedback.
Thank you very much, both of you. One question for the applicant, trying to understand the, where the trees are along the railroad property line. I understand there's a, there is an existing easement. I believe it is about 40 feet wide. I believe that easement runs from the property line up to where the building is at, so that's sort of one question, did I understand that correctly? And number two, the existing mature trees that appear to be right along the property line, are they on your property or are they across from your property? And, sorry, third, if they're on your property, do you intend to keep them or are you not sure yet? Three parts to that. Thanks.
So the first part is just to confirm that there is a 40-foot-wide easement along the railroad tracks. The second part was, do we plan to keep the trees?
Yeah, I wasn't even sure if they're on your property or not.
It's our understanding that they are on the property, and they're inside the fence line that then runs along Caltrain. And we're still currently studying whether or not it makes sense to keep them or not.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
I don't have any questions.
Nor do I at this time. So should we move it to the public comment, please?
Vice Chair Ebner, right now, there is one public, or two public comments on Zoom, but I'm just gonna give it a few minutes, or a few moments. Sorry, there are five now. What would you like the timer to be?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Please.
Vice Chair Ebner, our first public commenter is going to be Richard Hedges. Richard, you can go ahead and... It looks like Richard has lowered his hand, so our next public commenters can be Lori Watanuki. Or you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki. I do like the Spanish Revival architecture in this, in the design. I would like to see some other things incorporated into the design, such as a tile roof perhaps over the asphalt roof, maybe recessed windows, deeper insets, some molding. And the Azara does have the use of colored tiles, which is very beautiful. Maybe this design can be enhanced with colored tiles. The railroad side does need some work, and I have seen in some buildings in San Carlos, molding being used with a very simple design motif on a blank wall. And perhaps that can be incorporated into the railroad side of the facade. There is another development called the Firehouse Square Project in Belmont, and that's a beautiful design project. And if the owner can take a look at that particular project, perhaps some new design ideas can be incorporated from that project into this one. I'd like to see a traffic study, analyze the backup at Fourth and South Humboldt, and more of the older growth trees preserved. One public benefit, in thinking about public benefits, is that there are many small groups in San Mateo, and small groups have very limited budgets. And if we could utilize the onsite conference room for association meetings, that would be a great asset and a community benefit for us. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Vice Chair Ebner, our next speaker is Richard Hedges. Richard, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I don't know what happened. My Zoom blinked and my hand was down. So anyway, thank you for letting me speak, Chair Ebner and Commission members. I have some reservations about this particular project. I was a little bit offended by the reference to being transit-oriented development. As a crow flies, it may be a half-mile, but as you walk, it's not. There are no services around it. I was in one of the committees that gave feedback to Metropolitan Transportation Commission on what a development like this should be that's near transportation. It's actually about halfway between the downtown station and the Hayward Park Station. It is not transit-oriented development. It's really challenged with parking. I've had to walk three blocks to businesses there, not finding parking in the area. And the residents really turned out for the neighborhood meeting. I was on that complaining about the parking. One of my biggest problems with it is there's no three bedrooms. And I really get tired of developments trying to get to that magic number where it's difficult to turn down the project by having a large number of one-bedrooms and efficiency apartments. They have a few two-bedrooms, but not enough. I would really like to see them put in at least 10 three-bedrooms, because we need those with people with families here. And it's just too tall for the area. It's too massive for that area. It really needs to be downscaled. But my other big problem with it is that this company really doesn't use craftspeople that are well-trained. I don't know of any history where they've ever used well-trained union craftsmen from the area. They bring their people from out of the area. And I would like to hear a pledge that at least they're going to build prevailing wage. So those are my comments for now. We need housing, but we don't need housing at any cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Vice Chair Ebner, our next speaker is Michael Weinauer. Michael, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm still trying to gather myself after hearing Rich Hedges saying that the project should be scaled back. I never thought I'd hear that. He's right to a degree. As a central resident, our biggest concerns around this, I'll group them, are the design, as you've sort of tackled, and of course, traffic and flow around that, and then, you know, pedestrian safety and access and whatnot. And I have to say, I laud the developers, BDE, the architecture consultants, who really, like, the difference between the first renderings and these renderings are tremendous. Those three arches at the entrance are absolutely gorgeous. They're really like, they make a statement, and they're something that we'd really be proud of here. I think they need to go back and do that along the, like, there's this total neglect of the railroad side, which I get it, you know, trains are just passing through, but, you know, people live there and people are going to drive by, so, and train by, so, you know, put some pride into that, put some effort into it. And on the Clermont side, it's still pretty massive and flat. As people have said, the fire station project in Belmont really is, it's a nice project. It's very detailed, it's gorgeous. We should demand this thing for this project. As it pertains to traffic flow, Ninth is one of the few east-west routes, and that really needs to be, all those concerns really need to be ameliorated, right? Whether it pertains to Uber pickups, Amazon drop-offs, whatever it is, there's just too many blockages right now, so please be very sensitive of that. Of course, I know you guys are aware of this, but we're trying to really, as a city, become more pedestrian and bike-friendly. So all those routes to downtown, we need to make sure that people can walk and that the trees are preserved, the oak should be preserved. I'm not sure about the eucalyptus, because those are invasive, but, you know, I'll defer to the experts on that. But, you know, having a canopy and not putting in a 10-gallon tree that's going to take 20 years to establish anything isn't necessarily the answer. So let's be smart about that, build a project that we can really be proud of, and I think they're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Vice Chair Ebner, our next speaker is Drew. Drew, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and the applicant, and members of the public. So, interesting project. I did attend the, at least one of the community meetings recently on this, and I appreciate that meeting. I do remember hearing some things that weren't mentioned in staff report, in part because I mentioned them, but talking about grade separation and this building accounting for that, even though it might be 20 years from now, there are things, because it's still our tax dollars when grade separation happens. So that's around a ninth in the tracks, potentially, the road would go down. You know, this isn't finalized by any means, just in general, how it's worked on the peninsula. The roads tend to go down and the tracks tend to go up. So the building, the entrance, all the stuff on the sidewalk on the Ninth side, just the road and stuff, the foundation on that corner, and just things that can allow that to go down somewhat, I'm not saying 20 feet, but it might be like five feet and stuff, where how that's all incorporated, so it's somewhat set up to be able to do that. And so we don't have to, you know, it just saves us a lot of money down the line. And on that, kind of further on that note, is mention this back in the Kikuk Crossing Building and stuff, when there's residents being done along the tracks. Because of grade sep, there's a good chance, but again, it's not finalized or anything, just in the beginning, that the tracks would be higher than they are right now. So you go out and you're like, oh, the tracks are right here, so sound and stuff. And it's like, no, the tracks might be 10 feet, they might be 20 feet up in the air by the time you get the bridge deck and stuff. So it's like the second and third floors need to be in that side of the building, just better sound protection, things done. Just how the building is set up to deal with that, because again, it's a lot cheaper, there's cheaper things that can be done right now, and that just set us up for success in the future. And while it is years away, I just do feel like small things to make it better now is a good thing. Another piece, moving on, was just because of the sizing on Clermont, it just does seem massive. I do not know about the height limits and all of that exact details, but I had wondered about lowering the Clermont side down a floor and raising the building, like, kind of on the railroad track side, up a floor, so it's less massive on that side, and on the railroad track side, it's higher where that's less of an issue. And also, just in general, on that side of the building, it doesn't have to have a lot of windows, but as some other speakers have said, there's just stuff to do in the architecture, not high maintenance, but just that makes that side. You know, there's a, it's a kind of a blank canvas. Let's make it interesting. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Drew.
Vice Chair Ebner, our next speaker is Bennett Lebarts. Bennett, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the current owner of this project and have partnered with the Martin Group. First, I want to thank the Commissioners for your time and comments tonight, and also want to thank Linda and staff for their presentation and for your support and feedback during our pre-application process. I want to let you, I would like to let you know a little bit about ourselves. We've been members of the San Mateo community for 40-plus years. We purchased this building in the 80s and have operated ourselves since that time. We've currently reached a point where the building needs revamping as its age has caught up to itself. We think it's the right time to build a new development while keeping a similar-sized office component, maximizing the residential component for the benefit of the San Mateo community. If you're not aware, our current building is called Twin Oaks Plaza for our heritage oaks, trees located on the property. The trees are near and dear to my heart, and I think our Twin Oaks fit seamlessly into our proposed design. I believe they'll stand out and be the stars of our site for the coming years to come. As far as our height in relation to our neighbors, I do understand that we are the first proposed development on our block. I do think in a short time, our neighbors will look for similar developments as their properties are in similar situations to ours. We may be the first proposed, but I think other sites will catch up fairly quickly. For the last 40 years, we've tried to upkeep and maintain our current building with utmost care for the benefit of the community, and we plan to do the same for the next 40-plus years. I've heard everyone's comments tonight, and I thank you for your feedback. We've noted your comments and will look into incorporating what we can into our design plans going forward. Thank you again for your time, and we look forward to filing and discussing our formal application with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Bennett.
Vice Chair Ebner, we do not have any more speakers at this time.
Thank you. Ashley, do we have any people in the audience who want to participate in this discussion? I would say no. This public period is now closed. Public comment period is closed. We'll bring it back to the commission. Would the commission now want to look at the agenda-dized items, or do you have comments you want to make before we get to the agenda components?
It'd be nice to have them, yeah.
Would you like to start, Adam?
Sure, sure. I'll start for this one. So I took notes as I was studying this, and, you know, I want to apologize to the applicant that it's so late, but we really do appreciate your time, and we want to make sure that, I mean, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I want to make sure that this is the best possible project and sets a standard for future ones in the area. First off, thank you for keeping the Coast Live Oak Street Tree at the existing parking lot, as well as the Large Valley Oak on the street at Clermont. I think that those are amazing trees, and, you know, keeping those is special. Also, thank you for including very low-income BMR units. Those are extremely needed in our city, and I appreciate you doing that. I want to encourage you to use prevailing wages and ensure that our workforce is paid well, that they can live in the city and around. Please replace some of the studios with three-bedroom units. I know that this is something that it can be hard to do in terms of getting your bottom line in place and, you know, accommodating the needs of your business as well as the needs of our city, but I want to encourage you to find space for three-bedroom units in this. I think I appreciate the mix of inclusion of two-bedroom units. It's really good and special, and I'd like to see that more. Currently, our city does not require such, you know, mixes, so it's really an ask that I give you. I looked up and studied some of your past projects, BDE Architecture, and so my comments on building design are going to reference your projects, because I think that's helpful and very, you know, it's easier that way, so, because you're familiar with them. and very, you know, it's easier that way, because you're familiar with them. So you know, I'm familiar with the 3 East Third Street, which is where Sweet Greens is. That's a nice building. Azara, which was recently completed on Delaware, I think is a very comparable project to this one. And I think I've heard just recently comment from the public how they appreciate it, and so I want to thank you for that. There's two projects that are on your boards that I, that are, I think one is under construction and one is about to be, or is also. It's the Legacy and Livermore that reminds me a lot of this, and then the Firehouse Square in Belmont. And I think both of those projects are where I'd like to see the design go to. I think these are two very well-designed projects in this style. And I understand that this has been morphing from previous design style into what it is today, and I'd like to help that become even more so like your Legacy, Livermore, and Firehouse Square project. You know, I hear nothing but praise for your Firehouse Square project. I think it's a Mid-Penn developed project. And some of the things that I like of that, and I'd like to see, you know, possibly integrated into this, I like the box bay windows that are included in that project. I do like the terracotta tile roof in that, and I have some suggestions on that aspect for this project so that it doesn't, you know, costs too much. And then I like the fabric canopies that were included in there. I think that that does kind of break up the texture of the building and kind of bring it out to the pedestrian realm. There are some traditional Muleon patterns to the windows that I think would be a good place to go. Right now, this is, this project is still feels to me a bit of a mishmash between contemporary and Mediterranean. And so, you know, that feels rather postmodern, and I don't necessarily love where that sits because I feel that a building of that kind of, in that tension space, can look dated. And I want to make sure that this has kind of a timeless appeal to it, you know, in this style. And you know, I like lots of different architectural styles, I'll just put it here, but I know that the public generally, you know, there's some dissent, and very valid dissent, but I hear, you know, pretty consistent public praise for the Mediterranean and Spanish revival, Spanish Mission Revival. So you know, I think that that's a good place to be for this project, given the neighborhood context. And then, you know, there's a couple other aspects of Firehouse, like there in some prominent spaces, there's contrasting lintels over some of the prominent windows. And then there's also visible architecturally decorative rafters at the roof eaves, and I think that that helps provide additional texture above. So to get more into my design comments, I think that the Ninth Avenue elevation is by far superior to the South Clermont elevation, and that's partially because of the courtyard in there, and it does feel kind of appropriate. One project that, one place that I love that, you know, many people are probably easily able to be familiar with is Ramona Street in Palo Alto, which has that Spanish Mission Revival style to it. And you know, 555 Ramona through the end of the block all the way to University has a mixture of that, and you know, you can probably Google that. I lived three blocks away from that when I was renting, and it was, you know, it's a great, it's a great place. There's, part of, one of the things that that does well is it has some texture without being too convoluted, especially in the older building, I think it's older building, near the corner of, on the opposite of University. So if you're not familiar with it, you know, check it out on Street View. Just talking about, going back to the project, the Clermont elevation to me is overly repetitive currently, and the detailing is a little coarse at the moment. So I recommend actually, you know, going to the flat roof style for more of the length of the, of the roof, more of the length of the building to punctuate kind of the difference. I like where you did it before, and I could see another or a third series of that flat roof and reducing some of the hip roof. And then I think it would be a good way to contrast the gable roof patterns that I appreciate and reduce the visible roofing, you know, especially if you can go to a terracotta tile. And then also, I recommend giving the tan corner of the building at the corner of Ninth and Clermont a flat roof. So right now, there's two gables, one's kind of next to each other. It doesn't, I don't like that. I'd rather have one single gable and then maybe a flat roof at the corner. That would actually kind of reduce the mass a little bit, but also just to me, it seems like it would be more interesting. Moving down, looking at the, at the building, at the ground floor, I feel that the surface of the building around the first-floor arches is a little uncomfortably plain, and I think the projection of those is, feels a little weird, you know, away from the rest of the wall above it. And so I would ask you to add something like a horizontal trim, a string course or a small tiled roof step-back above the arched areas of the facade. I think just something to break that up. It feels a little too plain at the moment, but I really like the arches, so I don't want you to get rid of those. And then to talk about window treatments, I would ask you to avoid flush-mount windows. One of the things that I like about the Ramona Street area that I'm talking about is that the windows have a reveal that give them some, the building additional texture without, you know, going, becoming too articulated. Just the fact that they're not, you know, just having that bit of shadow when you're walking down the street as a pedestrian and the building is on your, you know, on the left or the right-hand side, that shadow that the reveal provides is helpful because the flatness just is pretty sheer across a large building like this. I would add a traditional small masonry sill below the windows to increase visual interest and texture. This is, you know, optional, it's not always, you know, many of this style don't have that, but you know, consider that. Also, just looking at the score joints for the stucco, some of it is a little offset, and it's not, it has kind of a modern feel to it, and I would say, just go in, go all in on making it a little more even and less of a modern feel to the score joints. And then, so you know, to go back to the Firehouse Square for the windows, I really like the use of the traditional Muleon patterns for the windows, either square or vertical rectangular lights that are equally sized. I think that that makes it feel a little bit more authentic, even though, you know, there's some modern elements to that, to that building. And then I would also add visible architecturally decorative rafters at the roof eaves. It doesn't have to be substantial. And you know, even if you look at some other projects that are of similar, you know, it can be pretty simple if you look on the Ramona Street facades. And then the railroad elevation, it's quite sparse, and it still feels very modern. So if you could, could make it a little less modern feeling, it doesn't quite fit with the rest of the style where the style is going now. I don't have, I don't want, I don't have answers for that, but you know, I'm curious what other commissioners have to say. And then finally, well, I guess, I'll just talk, I just have a brief comment on the site plan and the landscape. So I am fine with the lack of the frontage zone due to the proposed use. I'm not going to push, ask you to push the building back. And I understand the size is larger than what is currently in that area, but it's also zoning compliant, and there's not really anything that we're going to do about it from a housing accountability perspective, and we need the housing, so that's that.
Thank you, Adam.
Do you want to go? I'll go through the chair. I have visited the site. I live more than X feet, 500 feet away, but I've been through the site a lot. My son learned to ride a bicycle in the parking lot. I think there's a much higher and better use for that parking lot, so I'm happy to see the project. And I, you know, noticed the nursery across the street. I've gotten plants at that nursery, and I've had coffee at the corner store across the street. So I think it's a very interesting transitional little site between downtown and the neighborhoods.
Let me clarify, I think you mean to say you live more than 1,000 feet from the subject site?
Yes.
State conflict of interest rules do not apply.
Thank you very much for that, yes. That's what I was trying to say, thank you. I will, I'm going to touch on the multifamily design guidelines, sort of in good faith, trying to go through those, and then I'm going to talk about the architectural style and then the train side at the back. Could I ask staff one clarifying question regarding grade separation? Just not to take it for granted, I have been assuming that grade separation is in the works for this intersection, and as was described by the public commenter, that probably means the tracks go up and the road goes down. Do we know, staff, if that's the plan?
To Vice Chair Abner, I continue staff at this. I know we don't have public work staff anymore on the call, so we don't have a definitive answer, but my understanding is that at this point, there's no plans for, definitive plans for grade separation at the site. Certainly, you know, that is something that could happen in the future, but we don't have anything on the books currently.
Thank you very much. Okay. Clearly I went up because then I won't have to ask it at the end. The general comments, you have about the same amount of office in the new proposals you had before, you're putting residential on top of it. That feels great, like an enormous improvement. The two oaks are amazing. The rendering's actually, maybe you're trying to show the architecture, you're not really doing the oaks justice. I know you had to show the building, but they're just amazing, both of them, and they do a lot to mitigate the mass of the building, obviously. The multifamily design guidelines sort of being applied in what I see as a very eclectic neighborhood, there's light industrial, or what I may not be properly, it feels light industrial with certainly service commercial oriented with single-floor auto shops, repair shops, there's I think a lumberyard down the street. There's interesting uses if you keep going to the south on Clermont, a lot of auto body shops there. You start to get residential as you move to the east, and I understand there is one sort of Spanish, two-floor Spanish revival building on the corner, but there's just a weird, a weird mix. The office building to the north is, I'm not even sure what that sort of glass modern box thing is, so it's very diverse. I think the multifamily design guidelines tend to assume just a multifamily building, not a mixed-use building, and I don't know that they directly tackle a situation, at least I didn't see it, where you have such a diverse context to react to or respond to. And so I think the prompts that I see in there, if taken sort of at their face value, could lead to a very interesting building. I don't know if that's good, interesting, or not, if you really want to pick up on the, in the multifamily design guidelines, as well as the, some of the urban design element goals in terms of the dominant building style. I don't see a dominant building style around there, and caution you if you really took that, what that would mean, the, even the, sorry if I can find it here, the spacing, the spacings that are common to existing buildings, I don't know if that's, I don't know what that would yield. I think if I, if I just pause and take a step back and look at a Spanish revival building of this size relating to buildings of that size, and what I think of, and what I spent a little time researching in terms of typical architectural motifs, features, and details, I think the Clermont facade would look a lot different if you were trying to put all that together in a way that breaks down mass scale, sort of assembles and aggregates building masses in a way that's typical to that style, and also that is generally aware that everything across the street is basically one floor. Now, I don't know that that's really going to happen on this project for reasons that have already been touched on. I guess what I would come back to is if you, if you want to do Spanish Mission Revival, and I don't, I think you could find reasons to do different things in the neighborhood. If you want to do Spanish Mission Revival, I would sort of then give you the following comments. I don't think asphalt roofs really would be Spanish Mission Revival. I think you would, those low gables, you would see tile roof expressed over the top of those. I'm not convinced that you would see a strong horizontal podium, you know, sort of expression between floors two and three. I think you'd be more likely to see the vertical mass come down to the ground and see more vertical massing breaks along the facade, and actually even more detailing towards the top. I think you're on the right track. I see some of those things, but I would concur or agree with Commissioner Nugent's comments around some of that feeling neither here nor there. I know it's a slightly different neighborhood, but I personally love going by Casa Baywood, which is on El Camino, right downtown. It's on El Camino, so you think sort of density and height there, and it is, I think, a five or six-floor building, but on the back side, it steps down to two-floor, one-floor buildings, and it even is going down a hill, so the height, height difference is accentuated. That building has more articulation, relief in the window Muleons, there's more, more scaler breakdown along the top floor, and there's more height variation, which I think would mean either going up or carving back terraces and sort of penthouses that are added there. And so you have a lot of, you have a big mass, a tall building, and you have a lot of moves that are made that are consistent to that architectural style that mitigate that mass. The corner of Ninth and Clermont, there is something about that gable that's feeling off to me when I look at it. I wondered if it needed to be a hipped gable in the corner. Again, I think would look better with the Spanish tile, but it's, I know, I understand the move to like, you know, not necessarily express the corner as the big tallest mass and to pull that off, but there's something about the hip gable that's feeling very, actually contemporary to me. So in terms of carve-outs or things you would consider, I like how the oak on Ninth, sort of the building carves out, you know, it responds to that, respects it in a way, and allows people to sort of enter the site there and enjoy that tree canopy. And I wonder if you would possibly consider something like that on Clermont, where you do have a very long facade. I think there are minor step backs and setbacks there, but there could be something really nice, and that tree canopy, I think, does extend over the current building. And so you, I'm not really sure if you would have an issue, but if you found you were going to have an issue where the building's mass, as it rose up, is actually in conflict with the canopy of that tree, you might find it beneficial to acknowledge and celebrate that in a way. Personally, I don't know, I don't see the justification to do Spanish Mission Revival. I think there's an argument that this could be more modern and utilitarian, it doesn't have to, it can filter the context, architectural context around it and make sense of it, and do something that's very much of its place. do something that's very much of its place. Not to reference an entirely different place, but there's a lot of buildings that I've seen in Portland that are of this sort of size and scale that sit in neighborhoods. And they jump right down to one or two-floor buildings. They are, I would say, modern, angular, but they still have massing breaks. They have rich material texture. And to me, I could see it going either way and being a nice building. But I think if you're going to do the Spanish Mission Revival, I think there are some improvements that, that would need to be made to make it more successful. Let me see. I understand this potentially is the applicant's first project in San Mateo. And so to me, I think it's an opportunity for the applicant to show this neighborhood, this community, kind of what their values are and how they improve the neighborhood that they're in. And I'm just thinking that in the way that you respond to this, deal with the, deal with the transition that you, that you have. And I think even if the bulk of the building isn't really brought down, I think there's any number of ways to be a good neighbor and part of a community. So very broadly and open-ended, there's, I think, ways to do that. I was wondering about the width of the sidewalks. And I go back and forth. Some of, some of the great sidewalks in the world aren't always the widest ones, but they are a bit more narrow over here. I wondered about sort of shifting the building back to give Clermont a little more breathing room, about bringing more landscaping so where the building meets the ground, having it be a bit softer. But I think you might, you might be hard up against the easement back there. And so that could be a, sort of making that not possible. I guess pivoting around to the railroad tracks, I was asking about the trees because my experience walking in cities and urban environments is the height of the building and what's four or five floors up is, and I think we talked about this a bit earlier, when you're directly at the base or a few feet away, you don't really experience that. You experience the first 20, 30 feet. It's when you step further back. And if there's not much to see because there's an existing canopy of trees, and I do walk down, I think it's railroad on the, on the, on the other side, behind the, you've got the interesting mix there on the opposite side of the railroad tracks. And so I look across, trying to imagine how much you would really see of that. So I acknowledge that it's, it's looking a bit sparse and spare. And I think to the extent that it's going to be visible, it ought to be, it ought to be improved. So I think there are things you could do there, but if it's not going to be so visible, I might rather see that, that enhancement investment made on the pedestrian experience at Ninth and Clermont. I think we were asked around, perfect prompt, or I think, I thought I saw a question around things you could do in that plaza. Yeah. What seating, bike parking, art elements would be incorporated in the plaza? Just referenced Casa Baywood again. That's, there's a small, subtle water feature in there. And even with the noise of El Camino, as you get close to that building, you hear this beautiful, subtle texture of, of water. It's, I think, is, sort of goes down the building. It's got this tile. The light glints off of the terracotta and the, as the water slides over it. And it's very nice. It's very subtle. It's very magical. So I think something like that could be nice. I do think preserving the oak gives you an enormous head start on what you would do there to make it an enhanced pedestrian realm. Let's see. I'll just mention parking at, at the end of this. That is an interesting intersection. This, this, the back of the building where it comes out onto Ninth, keeps going south from there, sort of goes down the hill a little bit to Clermont or up to the railroad tracks. I've tried to navigate this on a bike, as, on foot, as a pedestrian, with a small child in a car. And there's the curvature of the road, the elevation of it, sort of going down, going up, and people doing different things, zooming the railroad tracks, sort of coming down and stopping cars unexpectedly. It feels like it really is going to be a challenge. So obviously, something that would have to get looked at more. I'm not really sure what the solution would be other than, I, I could believe that it could be really complicated and not really safe for anyone if it's done wrong. So I trust that'll be looked at by the applicant, by staff. But it does look like something that's going to take some, some work and thought to make it work out. And those are all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
All right. I think I'm up next. I think the first thing I wanted to comment on is to just acknowledge that this is a mixed-use project that is building more housing than is required to offset the number of jobs it's creating. And I think that's super fantastic. I don't think we've ever seen that before in a mixed-use project, at least in the time I've been on the planning commission. So I want to commend you for making that commitment to building the maximum allowed, allowable housing on this site. It's desperately needed by our community. To that end, I'm, I mentioned this for the last project. I always advocate for more family housing. I would love to see some three bedrooms make it into this project if the space can be found for them. I don't know that I would necessarily sacrifice number of units to make that happen, just because, again, you know, we're in such desperate need of housing. Let's see. So I, I live in this neighborhood. I live a few blocks from this site. I live in a Spanish Mission Revival home. I love Spanish Mission Revival architecture. I think it would fit in really well with this neighborhood. Most of the homes along Ninth Avenue are Spanish Mission Revival homes. And so to me, it feels like a natural extension of the neighborhood to have it be in that style. That said, when I first saw the renders of this building, I don't know, I would have guessed that that was a Spanish Mission Revival project. If you hadn't said anything to me and you had just shown me the renders, I might have guessed something like more contemporary. And so I'll, I think the two other commissioners who went before me had some really great feedback. I won't belabor the point. But I will point you at a couple of other projects. Actually, I think all of these have already been mentioned. Casa Baywood Apartments at 12, 212 South El Camino Real, 555 Ramona Street in Palo Alto, again, both examples of multi-story residential Spanish Revival architecture that feels very timeless. And I think that's the big reason that the public seems to prefer Spanish Mission Revival style. I think it's because at least the projects that we have seen so far, the projects that exist, because they're very old, have a very timeless aesthetic to them. Whereas, you know, the traditional like five-over-one, Station Park green, everybody is sort of scared that that is going to look dated. I mean, I already think it looks dated. But you look at Casa Baywood, you look at 555 Ramona, I have no idea when those buildings were built, probably a long time ago. But they, they feel like they're always going to fit. They feel like they're very timeless. And two things about those projects is that they're not overly articulated. And I said this about the previous project. I'm not so passionate as other people about breaking down the mass of a large building by creating a bunch of articulated facades. I personally think that it looks goofy. And I think it's much more timeless when you have a more even facade. Of course, if you look at 555 Ramona, if you look at Casa Baywood, there is ornamentation between the stories. There are details that make it visually interesting and not just one giant flat facade. But my preference would be something more along those lines, something that's less articulated and more timeless. I will also point you at the Golden Ninth Deli, which is directly diagonal across the street from this project. When you just look at those two buildings side by side, right, Golden Ninth Deli has the clay tile roof. It has the exposed wood roof timbers. It has iron Juliet balconies in that like very ornamental style that you see on Spanish Mission Revival architecture. It's not like the straight, clean, modern iron balconies. And so I would look at those three projects and I would try to make this one fit to be more similar to Golden Ninth Deli, especially because it's right there. It's already part of the neighborhood. Some, one of the public commenters mentioned the colored tile at Azara. I personally am not a fan of that. I know a lot of people are, but my design style is super simple. Like I said, the whole Coco Chanel thing, take one accessory off before you walk out the door. Like, I, I tend to go for more simple. So that's just a comment there. I won't belabor it. I will echo that I feel the facade facing the tracks is too plain. It honestly looked to me like what happens sometimes when you get into like construction documents and you need to VE. It's like, which side are people going to see the less? Like, take some stuff away. But I think the reality is that that side is going to be hugely visible from folks in downtown. It's not just going to be something that's seen by people on the train. My family walks down Ninth Avenue to downtown multiple times a week. And on the way back, like, that's all we're going to see. And so it should, it should have the same amount of visual interest as the other facades. And then last comment, I would not reduce the height or increase step backs for two reasons. One, I would worry that it would reduce the housing intensity, which we cannot ask you to do. And two, well, with the step backs, I already said I don't like overly articulated facades. And with the reduced heights, I would think about the fact that, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I was frantically looking at my notes. I believe that this section of rail wood, rail wood, railroad, between Fifth and Ninth, in the recommended general plan land use that went forward, was recommended to be mixed-use medium, which is four to seven stories. And so thinking to the future, thinking to the next 10 years or to the next 20 years, I think it would be a shame if this project was reduced to fit in with the existing buildings that are there. And then the next buildings that were built were four to seven stories and were much higher. And then this one will be the odd one out. So rather than prioritizing matching what's existing, I would prioritize matching what might be likely to come, given that we're in the process of our general plan land use. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. Okay. So thank you very much to the public for all of your comments. Staff presentation was fantastic. And the planning commissioners have brought a lot of value to this discussion as they always do. I do like the tile at Azara or whatever it is. I was shocked I like it. We approved that building three or four years ago and it's turned out wonderful. And that entry to me is sparkling. And I still don't know why I like it because it's usually not what I like. The Spanish Revival has never been my favorite because we saw it for 25 to 30 years everywhere in California, and it was cheapened, and it was not authentic, and it became oppressive, oppressively present throughout the state. If you're going to go down this architectural route, I think you have to do exactly what the, my other commissioner said, and that is make sure that it is unique, it is authentic, and it does look like it's been there for the last 25 or 30 years. Then you can pull it off. But if you can't do that, then, then it, to me, it becomes a failure. The railroad side and the north side, well, let me back up. This project cannot meet and address the low-lying neighborhood current structures because it isn't low-lying and it's never going to be low-lying. It's the first one in this area. And I think this project actually is an extremely important project because it is going to set the tone in that, in that area. As Seema had mentioned, over the next 20 to 30, or maybe 15 to 20 years, that whole area is going to change. And this one will have a large influence on what is going to occur around it. I, so with that in mind, both the railroad, I like the Ninth Street architectural facade or the feel of that building. I think it's very nice. I, I don't like either the railroad side or the north side. They're much too plain. Something has to happen there to give them life and interest. And I think you've probably heard some fantastic suggestions from my fellow commissioners on how you can address them. I often look at the railroad side facade as the perfect location for live walls. I think you can get a huge benefit out of them, make them attractive, as long as you're committed to keeping those live walls groomed or trimmed and, and alive. I think, I've always thought that was a good solution for those areas. In fact, they've used some of it at the Bay Meadows, backside of the Bay Meadows, at their parking structures. They put the screens up and then they just let everything grow up to the screens. And it really makes an inexpensive, attractive facade for me.
Are those vines or are they, that you were mentioning?
I don't, since, I'm not sure what they have planted.
Okay. Okay. Just curious for the, just to help.
But I, you know, I mean, I think it's a great way to go. So yes, I think there should be some public art. There should be plantings. There should be some way to break up both sides of those buildings. Because the north side currently has a two-story complex next to it, which is going to go away at some point. So all of a sudden, you're going to have another residential building there, and they're going to be looking at that facade. And it's, you know, I think there should be better treatment on both those sides. But in fact, I did speak with the applicant yesterday, and I have, have visited the site. And I stressed the importance to realize that, that, that it's almost like it's an open, it's an open palette because there's nothing there that you really have to fit in with. And you, you, it's got to be done right because it's going to be like, that's the beginning of downtown at one point. It will be. And I think it'll be a landmark that people will acknowledge. And I hope they acknowledge it as a very positive experience. That was it on my comments. I think that my fellow commissioners have covered all of the issues that I think needed to be addressed as far as I'm concerned. And I, that's where I'm at.
Through the chair, I forgot one comment. It's more of a question, which is, the, the amount of parking, the project proposes to build 120 residential parking spaces, which is double the 60 required by the state density bonus law, but then only building 48 of the 74 office parking required by the zoning code with the deficit being covered by an in-lug fee. I guess my question, my question is, is there an ability to readjust what's dedicated to residential versus office after the building opens and after you have some data around what the demand is for residential versus the demand for commercial?
Yeah, we, we can study that ratio. Again, really, our desire, just based on the amount of room in the garage, was to maintain one per unit. And also taking into account changing, you know, office patterns, hybrid work. Some people are in a couple days versus others. We do expect that to, to change how traditional office parking is used. But we've committed to working with the traffic consultant during the formal entitlement process to, to study that as well.
Great. Thank you.
Any closing comments from commissioners?
I just wanted to say I, I like this project and I hope that you take these comments and, and can create something really special. Because this is, like people have said, this is going to set the standard for this part of San Mateo.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll echo that comment and also say that as somebody who lives in the neighborhood, I'm very excited to see this project come here and provide some much-needed housing for my neighborhood and some new neighbors for us to meet, hopefully some families.
Also echo, at the risk of being repetitive, great opportunity in this project. Really great opportunity for transformation, for great new addition to the fabric of the, of the area. I think an opportunity for this applicant to introduce themselves to the city. And so, yeah, very excited, very optimistic. city, and so, yeah, very excited, very optimistic about this. Thank you.
Great. With that, we'll close this item and move on to announcements.
Yes, happy to share some staff updates. Just wanted to note for the commission that the city council considered the draft housing element last night at a special meeting, and based on the input that was provided by the council, the commission, and the public, staff is actively working on amending and updating the draft housing element to submit to HCD in June. In other news, we also had the city council consider the B Street Bike Master Plan on May 16th, that does have bearing on certain projects that came to the commission through the study session process, and may, may affect the design of those projects moving forward. Looking ahead, on June 6th, the city council will also be conducting a study session on Senate Bill Nine, which looks at duplex development as well as lot splits being allowed by right in the R1 zoning district. There was a community outreach meeting that was held last week, so we are actively working on code amendments to bring the, the city's ordinance, to bring it, to be in compliance with the state requirements. At the next planning commission meeting on June 14th, we anticipate a study session for the Hillsdale Inn project. This is a project that has come before the planning commission before, but there are new owners, and without going into too much detail, because it's not agendized, just giving you a heads up, that that'll be the only item expected at the next commission meeting. And while we also will have a more business item, or rather, a logistical item, which would be the elections for chair and vice chair, that's something that the commission typically does in the first week of May, or the first meeting in May. However, we were waiting to have a full commission, and now with Commissioner Wiggins onboard, and, you know, with Chair Williams returning for the next meeting, we will have the full commission and will agendize the elections. And finally, the staff is looking at also updating the planning commission bylaws. This was an item that had gone to council earlier this year, that just given the volume of work that was going through our department, is not yet completed, but we are anticipating taking something to council either in June or July. Those are all of staff's updates. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any updates from the commissioners? Great, with that, we'll close this meeting. Thank you, everybody. Great work again, you guys.